Good evening. It's six o'clock and we will call together the...
There's a call.
There's a call. We're gonna call the regular meeting of Tuesday, December 7th to order. I'd like Howard to lead us in the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, as we come to this special time of year, we are reminded that eighty years ago this day, our country saw an attack on Pearl Harbor, Hawaii that changed the course of our nation and human history. On that day, the United States saw tremendous damage done to its Pacific Fleet in terms of damaged or sunk ships, but the greatest military loss was the 1,143 wounded and the 2,335 killed. December 7th, 1941 reminds us still today about the daily sacrifice our servicemen and women make around the world for our safety and our freedom. And so, Father, as we share our gratitude for this holiday season, we also share our thanks, our support, and our love for our military personnel and their families. Our freedom to celebrate any holiday, or none if that is our choice, is directly related to the freedoms that they have fought and died for from the beginning of this great country. Tonight, Father, we give thanks for the safety and freedom we enjoy, and we pray for our men and women in uniform around the world and their families. We pray for their safety and that they will return home just as soon as they can to celebrate this or another holiday season with family and friends. And a grateful nation says, "Amen."
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll go to public comment excluding any public hearing items. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none... Oops, I'm sorry. Good evening and please identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Marjorie Harold. I'm gonna apologize for bringing my grandchildren. I had no choice, but I will find somebody to keep them from down.
She agreed.
October, I called each of you. And some of you were in, and some of you were in meetings and on the West Coast, and you were doing your thing. And I left a message, or I think I didn't leave one, for Kathy Townsend. And that's because you were in a meeting and your secretary was not in. I heard on the television the night before that they were having Halloween carnivals. And Fort Pierce Lincoln Park Recreation Center was one of the ones who was having one. And I thought, "That is fantastic. We are on the news." So, I called you to tell you that we were having a Halloween carnival. If you couldn't get there that time, to find out what's going on and come to some of the things that we have. To be honest, most of you never come over to anything. But I wasn't worried about that. I was worried about from then on. And so, I called each of your offices and I did talk with your secretary and Linda Secretary. I found out you were in a meeting. And that's all I called for. When I'm told that Chris Shidowsky called and said, somebody, and said, "Let me know what's going on and when they're having stuff, and so I can, you know, work it in and out." And so, and I understand that you were told, or they were told, that Marjorie Harold needs to close her mouth because she's gonna get you in trouble. Now, and I'm gonna tell you who it is. Matt Baum. Matt, you gave me your number to call you, and you gave it to me before. It was Matt Baum. Now, what I did was no problem for anybody. And your calling, Chris Shidowsky, your calling to make sure that you are letting know what is going on in the community, so that you can come to some things, was very good. I'm here tonight just to let you know. I used to call all the time. I used to come all the time. But I got out of doing that, and with getting out of doing that, a lot of things happened that should not happen or will not continue to happen.
Could you please wrap it up?
Yeah, that's it. You know, there's no problem with me asking you to do something. You gonna do it or you not? And I will continue to contact you and let you know. When I know, I will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak under public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to number five, approval of the minutes of the November... Can we put these all together, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, sir.
Okay, November 2nd, the B.O.C.C. regular meeting of November 16th, the B.O.C.C. informal meeting of November 9th, and the minutes of the reorg on November 16th, and the joint Port St. Lucie meeting of October 27th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Shidowsky. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shidowsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. There are no proclamations this evening, but we do have a presentation from the 4-H Remembrance. And in the audience tonight, we have Grantley Ricketts, we have Tanya Benoff, I probably messed that up, Carly Barker, Debbie McManus. They're from the U.F.I.F.S. staff and from St. Lucie County 4-H. The officer team of Lily Crawford, Brooke Adams, Carson King, Gavin McManus, and Lila King. Please come forward.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your continual support of our 4-H Youth Development Program. Through this 2021 year, our 4-H program has continued to thrive despite the many challenges of the pandemic. With limited 4-H programming from January through June, our 4-H office had an opportunity to develop new educational programs in the virtual space. These virtual programs have been successful at fulfilling the educational needs of our community by reaching over 5,000 community youth through school enrichment and community clubs. With new programs comes new opportunities. In this new 4-H year, we are excited to be back in person providing all of our regular in-person programs along with our virtual and hybrid programs. Though the pandemic was difficult, we persevered and continued to grow our 4-H program in many different ways. As we look around tonight, we can see that the Commissioner's Chamber is not as full as it normally is on this December meeting night. However, tonight, I have brought with me some of my officers of the 4-H County Council. These youth are the voice of our 4-H community and are the next generation of leaders. Two of our county council members have also been elected as Florida 4-H State Officers this 2021-2022 4-H year. We are so proud that out of five officer positions at the state level, St. Lucie County has representation in two of them. Even though our 4-H community clubs are not here tonight to thank you for your continual support, they are eagerly waiting to come back next year to see you for an in-person event. Tonight, we have created a video to share all the wonderful things that they have done and plan on doing for this 4-H year. As you watch the video, our county council youth will be handing out your holiday boxes. Though the boxes are a bit smaller this year, they are full of gratitude for your continual support to our 4-H Youth Development Program. I would like to call up Brooke Adams and Lily Crawford so they can share briefly about their leadership position within Florida 4-H State Office and County Council before we watch the video from our 4-H community clubs. And again, thank you for your support, and from us at the 4-H office, we wish you all a very happy holiday season.
And before you leave the mic, just for the record, could you identify yourself?
Oh, yes. I am so sorry. I am Tanya Benefiff. I am the 4-H agent here in St. Lucie County.
Now, I know how to pronounce your last name. Thank you. Continue. Thank you so much.
Good evening, County Commissioners. Long time no see. My name is Lily Crawford, and I am your St. Lucie 4-H County Council President and the Florida 4-H State Council Treasurer.
And I'm Brooke Adams, your St. Lucie County Vice President and the Florida 4-H State Council Parliamentarian. We could not be more proud to serve our whole community and the state of Florida in 4-H. With us, we have two more St. Lucie County Officer, County Council Officers, Carson and Lila King. And our county council is made up of the 4-Hers from all of the different clubs in our county.
We've come together to enhance our leadership skills, public speaking skills, and community pride projects. Over the summer, I have received two grants for the community pride projects we do. These were for our water quality project and the lending library that's across the street at Kids Crossing. The support you give St. Lucie County 4-H is something we appreciate endlessly. And because of this support, we have the opportunity to not only grow ourselves and other youth, but we also get to help our county blossom. So far this year, our 4-H program has held a food drive and pet supply drive while continuing to test water quality at Indian Hills Recreation Area. And this year, we're also testing Moore's Creek.
This year, we have also received a lot more participation on the leadership side of 4-H, which makes us very happy to see because it shows us the future leaders of not only our county, but also in our state. We have both had the privilege to hold a Florida 4-H State Council Officer position, and this is providing us with the opportunity to bring back what we learn and use it in our own community.
Thank you for always supporting us so we can make the best better. We appreciate you all immensely.
I just wanna say, girls, before you leave, and it's not a play on words, but you are our homegrown talent and our future leaders. And I just can't thank you enough. I know public speaking is sometimes scary to many, and you guys, you knocked it out of the park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys.
You can play the video.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, okay, well, and I'll talk after that.
And then I'll come back up and just wrap up.
My heart to greater loyalty. My hands to larger service. My health to better living. My work, my club, my community, my country. And my world. Happy Holidays from Midnight Ration!
Hello, my name is Jasmine Kenzer and I am the president of the Midnight Riders 4-H Club.
Hi, my name is Cassie Janosko and I am the vice president of the Midnight Riders 4-H Club.
I would like to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for all that you do. We wouldn't have 4-H or have it be as successful as it is without you. It's your time, dedication, and love that allows us to be a 4-H family. I know that I'm a better person because of the 4-H program. It has taught me, along with many others and many more to come, life skills, communication, life lessons, and how to be a better person in general and towards others. You are a part of a huge impact that the 4-H program has on many people possible without you.
We are a small club consisting of only a few members. While we are small, it makes us more of a family rather than just a group. This year, we will be participating in many community service activities, including the Thanksgiving food drive, pet supply drive, and more. We also plan to participate in the sights and sounds Christmas parade this year. We are mostly a horse group, but we do have a small animal member.
From the Midnight Riders, we want to thank you again for all your support, making the 4-H program and more specifically our club able to function, be successful, and have fun in the process.
We look forward to seeing you at our 2022 St. Lucie County Fair.
Thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
And from the Midnight Riders fam- thank you.
Happy Holidays! I'm Jalen Hutchinson, I am the president of Porchers 4-H Club. And on behalf of my club, we'd all like to thank you all for your continued support and everything you do for 4-H. With that being said, we decided this year, as a token of our appreciation, to volunteer our services to DDS for Vets, which is an organization that helps veterans find service animals. Again, we thank you all for everything you do for us and for your conditional support. And we all hope you have a wonderful Christmas and happy Thanksgiving!
Hello, county commissioners. My name is Leah Jockey. I'm the president of Porchers 4-H Club. My eight years of being in 4-H have been the most valuable things that veterans can try to give back to members. Some ways in which veterans have given back is the Big Heart Brigade, spectacular Thanksgiving food drives, and pet supply drives. Focus of our club is to give kids a fun environment to learn valuable lessons. For 4-H, I have learned the importance of hard work and teamwork, those on which I will carry throughout my life. 4-H has also given me a passion for livestock and has contributed to some of the best trips. On behalf of Porchers 4-H Club, we would like to thank you for your support. We hope you enjoy the year's week prepared for you. Happy Holidays, members of Porchers 4-H.
Misses!
Hi, my name is Brooke Adams and I'm the president of Showstoppers 4-H Club. And this is Lily Crawford, the vice president of Showstoppers 4-H Club. In Showstoppers, we are a multi-species club, including steers, beef breeding, rabbits, chickens, and we also do horticulture. And we have members ranging from five to eighteen years old. This year, we will be adopting a family in Yeramane, so this includes everything to make a family's Christmas magical. And that will include gifts and a meal, and some of the other projects that we can do throughout the year are drives with the 4-H program and anything else. We also do some Big Heart Brigade, and, yes, blanket drives and clo-. We just had our first workday and it's great. We look forward to seeing you at the St. Lucie County Fair.
You guys.
Hello, clippers.
Hi, my name is Brooke Adams.
And we're the president and vice president of Sunton Hort- Horture 4-H Club.
We would like to start by saying thank you to all of what you do for us.
For our appreciation, we have left you a wooden chicken wing in your impression.
Some of our, some of the community service comments that we have for Christmas today take your hearts out of me, through this food type of wear, pet food drive, blanket drives, and the Thanksgiving food drive.
Thank you for all that you do.
Hi, my name is Hannah Steele and I am president of Treasure Coast Wine 4-H Club, as well as a member of county council. For community service this year, our club has participated in the pet drive and the Thanksgiving food drive. We also are going to be donating one turkey per member to the Big Heart Brigade on behalf of the county commissioners.
Hi, my name is Taylor Gates. I am vice president of Treasure Coast Wine. 4-H has taught me to step up and become a leader.
My many years in 4-H has taught me to be accountable for my actions and take responsibility.
Many of our club members are involved in NJSA or FJSC. Our club's goal is to work together and make the best out of it.
On behalf of myself, our leaders, Taylor, and the members of Treasure Coast Wine, we would like to give a huge thank you for all of your support.
Hi, my name is Melissa Kopic and I'm the president of Trails and Tales 4-H Club. Although these past couple of years have been pretty rough, we couldn't have done it without you and your dedication. Our main goal this year is to help out our community as much as we can. As for me personally, 4-H has taught me so many things, such as commitment, hard work, responsibility, dedication, and so much more. On behalf of our club, we would like to thank you for every- and we wish you a fantastic rest of the year.
Hey, I'm Lisa Friend. I am the vet prep, vet science teacher at Manatee Academy in St. Lucie West, in St. Lucie County School District. And our program features many 4-H programs that are both here at the farm and also mobile programs they bring to our school for our vet prep students. Our students are middle schoolers, grade six, seven, and eight, and they come to the farm here to learn hands-on techniques for handling, feeding, keeping animals sanitary, and learning how to deal with veterinary topics such as restraints, healthcare, healthcare checkups. We get to check the respiration, the blood pressure, sometimes of various animals. And they get to work with large animals, which we can't normally work with at our middle school level. Also, they come to our classroom, which we really, they bring all kinds of interesting veterinary topics to our students in the class, such as restraint and bandaging techniques that you would use in a veterinary hospital or as a field veterinarian. They also bring their own dogs. Ms. Tanya and Ms. Carly are extremely helpful and knowledgeable about all the different techniques that veterinarians would need to know. They help us with blood samples, where we look at different kinds of blood cells for chickens and large animals, and compare them to humans. And we do fecal floats, we study behavior. Really, it's unlimited, so anything that we need them to help us with, they are very accommodating, and we, we wouldn't be able to run our program without them. We appreciate it very much.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Benton and I teach at Creative Arts Academy and I teach kindergarten. The 4-H extension office has been so helpful with every grade that I've ever taught, every school that I've ever taught at, and we've used all their programs. My kids have especially loved the eggs. They love playing with them once they're hatched. They love going to the 4-H farm. We've had ladybug releases, and every staff member is so friendly and helpful and knowledgeable. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it was very long, but we have a lot of our community clubs that aren't here today, and so they had the opportunity to speak and share what they were doing. And we also had our school enrichment teachers also share this year so that you guys can see more of our involvement that we have. And just to wrap up, I just want to say thank you again for all your continual support throughout this year. And thank you also for your personal donation towards our 4-H movie night, which is coming up this Friday. And we really look forward to seeing you guys out there to enjoy The Grinch. And once again, thank you.
If you don't mind, commissioners and your children that are here, would you mind standing up front and we'll get a picture?
Yes.
I think that would be great.
Yes. Commissioner, yes. You guys ready?
On three.
On two.
Got it. Thank you.
And again, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great job. Again, thank you, 4-H. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that any of the commissioners would like to pull for further discussion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
On AK-1. I just, I think it's important to recognize projects whenever they're good. And this is a project that took a lot of effort to go into educating the people of Lakewood Park. I believe this is one of the first projects that the county has been able to do that was at a hundred percent funding. I don't know that that's ever happened until this project. And I think that we need to stand up and recognize the staff, as well as the leadership of Don West, that saw this project all the way through and the importance of it. And since then, the second project the county has actually funded at a hundred percent now will be the Taylor Creek Project. So it's important to recognize that we really do go after money and funding and to make it happen. I know that Commissioner Hutchinson, you, you are a water warrior as well with a lot of these projects too. So I just always like to pull these out and let them be recognized because I think it's important, because we, we do spend money, but it's worth mentioning whenever we do something and we get the funding from above, and it doesn't cost taxpayers here at, at the county level. So thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. Is there anything else? If not, well, on that same note, of course, most of you know that Harmony Heights has been a project of mine for at least thirteen years, and it happened long before I even came over. But we're starting to see, because of the community input with folks like Mamie Davis, Kenny Bowe, Ben and Ethel Robinson, Ruth McGill, Ruby McCoy, the Mobleys, Adrian Jefferson, those folks actually went into the neighborhood, began to talk about the benefits of the stormwater improvements, but we didn't have the, we didn't have the land for the stormwater ponds and the treatment trains. And because of their efforts in their community, being involved and coming to our offices and speaking with each of you, we've been able to secure and be able to move this project forward. Been a long time coming. I want to first thank the board and previous boards for their continuous support of getting this project done. And now that we have willing sellers, the number of items on our consent agenda are all under HC are from Harmony Heights. And I just wanted to point that out because it does take community effort, it does take each of you to support issues that we want to try and bring forward. So I just want to bring that forward and say thank you to each of you and to the community's support for getting that thing, those things moved forward. Also, today, we have a number of items on the airport improvements. Those are going to help move this airport further, further faster. It's been a long time coming. And again, those are grants that we seek from outside that helps to alleviate some of the challenges and the pain of local taxpayers. But the future economic development of the airport is going to be incredibly important, and these items are going to be the foundation of making that happen. And lastly, am I out here? There, when we talk about developments, planned unit developments and issues that come before the county commission, you know, growth is inevitable for most communities. We have been found in St. Lucie County, but as part of that, this board and previous boards have always been about making sure that we protect our environment as best we can, and we find cooperation, we find yes, by, by working with the developers, by finding common ground. And maybe, maybe Commissioner Hutchinson remembers this fellow, but Dixie Mintz was a developer from way back when with the coconut program up there off of US One Way to the North. And as part of that, they were able to secure and protect the lackluster mint, which is a endangered species. And so as part of the process tonight, we'll be approving, I hope, without any challenges, the conservation area that will protect these plants for future generations. And we are probably one of the last areas in which this plant exists. So again, talking about cooperation with developers and our environmental resources department, our legal, there's opportunities for us to make these changes, to find compromise and to protect our environment and to have a better, more beautiful community. I just want to raise those things because those are, those are issues and items that often get sent along and not noticed. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that up and, and point that out. And I want to again thank the volunteers, many, 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 many volunteers who have helped to, help prosper and have those, those plants prosper in our community. So I just want to again point out to those folks and thanks for ERD. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just let the record reflect, although there was nothing pulled prior to the meeting tonight, the following items were modified prior to the meeting on public hearings, administration, BOCC redistricting. There was an attachment added. And on the regular agenda, request for qualifications for the airport MRO, there was an item amended. And also, 10A, county attorney was an add-on, and that was a consent to merger of APP properties. Is there anything that else any commissioner would like to say, or we can vote on the consent agenda?
Move approval, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hutchinson. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll go into public hearing. This is a public hearing. If any would like to speak. On these agenda items. And number one will be BOCC redistricting. Again, this is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we're doing the once every ten-year joy of redistricting the county's commission districts. It's required in Florida statutes and in the, in the constitution. And we are going through that process, and we are going through sort of the final, final phases of that, of that process. So with me tonight, I have Lori Bender and Ed Blaine from our GIS division. They've been very helpful in, in moving this forward. And they got the software that has made this a lot, lot easier. So would you go back to the second slide? There we go. So as I said, it's conducted every ten years and the year after the decennial census. And it's examining the need to rebalance our districts, you know, from the, from the count in the census. And obviously, St. Lucie County has grown very substantially. By the census, over fifty thousand people have been added to, to the, to the county since 2010, and since 2011, the last time we went through it. So just, there are just some real general guidelines for redistricting, you know, try not to dilute minority voting strength. When we're setting up the districts, we try to follow the census blocks or follow significant boundaries, lakes, rivers, roads, canals, and things of that nature. Try to make the districts contiguous and compact and create the population as equal as possible. So there were fifty-five thousand people in each district in 2010. There are now sixty-five thousand people in each district. As we know, there were some issues with the census. It was released much later than normal, so we are, we're a little behind schedule, but I think we have, we have done all of the steps, checked all the boxes that we need to do. Next slide, please, Lori. Here's the, here's the population comparison from 2010 to 2020. 2010, as I said, there were fifty-five thousand people in each district. The map on the right is the current setup of the commission districts. In 2020, again, we added some fifty thousand people, and you can see the district changes, you know, all the way from about five thousand people added to District One to almost twenty thousand people added to District Five. And District Five includes, you know, the very fast-growth area of Tradition and Southern Grove. So here's just a little spreadsheet that shows the percentage change in population for each of the municipalities and the unincorporated county. City of Fort Pierce grew by almost thirteen percent. The county grew by almost twelve percent. The village added twenty-three people. That's, that was, that was big. But overall, obviously, Port St. Lucie added almost twenty-three percent, twenty-three percent. So we're, we grew to about, about eighteen and a half percent in the last decade. So as I said earlier, the county produced the software that came loaded with all of the census blocks and the populations, and, and it really made the process a lot easier. And then when we had our informal meeting back in October, you know, we came up with the five scenarios that we had for you, and then the board was able to actually in real-time tinker with moving lines around and, and, and just made it much more interactive and much more real-time. The schedule, as I, we followed, we had the informal on the fourteenth. We've posted the districts online soon thereafter. We had an open house here in the chambers back on November fourth, and here we are December seventh for the adoption hearing. After the hearing, once the board selects the preferred alternative, we will publish it, along with the minutes of the meeting, which will include the map and the, the district, legal description of the district that the surveyor has prepared, that will be included in the minutes as well. So here's the first scenario. This is, District One is in green, obviously takes up the city of Fort Pierce. And this, in this scenario, does include both North and South Hutchinson Island. It is the only scenario that, or district that does not include portions of Port St. Lucie. And, and with the exception of, of North Hutchinson Island not being, no longer being in District Five, this is probably the map that most closely resembles the one that we have now. District Four, go back to, to, thank you. District Four stretches a little further out west. Districts Two and Three in Port St. Lucie have gotten a little bit smaller in terms of physical size, but obviously, we're seeing a lot of infill development growth. All those vacant, those eighty thousand vacant lots in the city of Port St. Lucie are just, they're just, they're being picked off one by one. I think, Ed, we, we counted, what, they're down to maybe thirty thousand?
Right.
Yeah, so you can see that a lot of that growth is not only just in, in the, you know, the western annexation area, but also infilling in, in the city, the older parts of the city. And District Five continues to wrap around and pick up a lot of that growth area in Tradition and in Southern Grove. Next one, Lori. So this is the second scenario that came out of the informal meeting. This one is similar to what we have now in that District Five has North Hutchinson Island, District One has South Hutchinson Island. District Four is pushed a little further south into Port St. Lucie rather than out west, and Districts Two and Three again wholly within the city of Port St. Lucie. This does include in District One, picks up the northwest corner of the city of Port St. Lucie, so that would have all five districts touching a part of Port St. Lucie. And then this is kind of the outlier. I think it sort of shows what a challenge it can be, particularly to balance out five, Districts One and Five, to pick up enough people in, for District One, you know, we had to go way, way out west in order to try and make District Five a little bit more compact. It does make Districts, District Four a little more compact. And again, Districts Two and Three wholly within the city of Port St. Lucie. So those are the three scenarios that, that we, that came out of the informal meeting. It's the staff recommendation that, you know, we have, obviously, it's a public hearing, we have some public comment. We're here to answer questions, have the board select one of the three options that have been proposed, and then include the selected scenario, the map, and the legal description as approved by the county attorney. We didn't prepare all of the legal descriptions because there were, there would, that was, it took two days just to do one. So we have the example of District, you know, Map One, but if you choose Scenario Two, then we'll just include that as approved by the county attorney, so we'll be ready to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Satterley.
Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Satterley? Seeing none. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak? And there has, sir, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Reardon. I've been practicing as a doctor in St. Lucie County for the last 30 years and living on Marina Drive, on North Hutchinson Island, for the last 30 years. My address is 213 Marina Drive. I am the president of the North Beach Association. You can call it N B A for short. And we represent more than 1,200 residents, households, 1,200 households. The median composition of the households is two, and I estimate that I am representing approximately 2,400 residents, most of whom are your constituents. N B A's purpose is to preserve and promote North Hutchinson Island. We undertake activities and support governmental actions which will make the North Beach area a better place to live. We strive to maintain and improve the value of our property, preserve the natural beauty of North Beach, and protect its ecological aspects, including the protection of our beaches and our waterways. St. Lucie County residents were recently notified that due to a new census report, it is necessary to update the bound, the district boundaries for locally elected officials. The county G I S division has created three new, and different district maps, as we just reviewed. So each commission district represents roughly the same number of residents. North Beach Association has evaluated the three proposals, the three scenarios, and has selected Scenario Number Two as best for representing the interests of St. Lucie County overall, the barrier islands, and North Hutchinson Island. I'll add that we met as an executive committee, and the, the vote was unanimous in favor of Scenario Two. We brought it to the Board of Directors. Again, the vote was unanimous for Scenario Two, and then we brought it to our membership, and it was, everyone seemed to be in support of Scenario Two. That last, that last meeting was last night, so this is up-to-date sort of information I'm probably, I'm giving to you. The economic drivers for the county and its growth have revolved around a strategically-supported business economy emphasizing agriculture and tourism, much of which is focused on our Indian River Lagoon, inland waterways, intracoastal waterway, and oceanfront access. N B A believes that selecting the district as represented in Scenario Number Two will best analyze, guide, and strongly advocate on behalf of our critical water elements. We appreciate your consideration of our position as you deliberate further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject matter?
Yes, she has sheets down here.
Okay, and we have another woman coming up.
Jerry Bullock?
That's her.
Good evening, and please identify yourself.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Shawn Mitchell and Commissioners Kathy Townsend, Kristofowski, and Franny Hutchinson. I am pleased to be here. My name is Jerry Bullock. I live at 3120 Atlantic Beach Boulevard on Hutchinson, on North Hutchinson Island. I've been a resident of the county since 2011 and a Florida resident. I am also the secretary of the North Beach Association, which represents, as you've just heard, over 1,200 households on North Hutchinson Island. My husband Peter and I have been before you several times when the, when the proposals tend to affect North Hutchinson Island, and we have come before you to express our desire for those that enhance the beauty of North Hutchinson Island, preserve its way of life, and preserve our property values. So we as individuals, as well as members of the North Beach Association, also support Scenario Two, which leaves North Hutchinson Island as a, as part of District Five, and leaves both of the barrier islands, North Hutchinson Island and South Hutchinson Island, represented by different commissioners. And we believe by doing that, we would have two voices on the commission who would advocate for the, the right things to do for our waterways and our inlet and our beaches. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Craig Munt?
Good evening, Mr. Munt.
Chairman Mitchell, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Craig Munt. I live on Atlantic Beach Boulevard on North Hutchinson Island. I've had the opportunity the last few months, knowing that this issue was coming up, to speak with many of the people, not only on the Hut, Hutchinson Island area, but also throughout the county. And what I have found universally is that we are a well-managed county. There are some issues that we talk about and maybe have a divergence of opinion from time to time, but universally, I never heard anything say, gosh, those commissioners really screwed it up this time. And so consequently, with that, that in mind and, and the, the thoughts that have been presented previously, we'd like to stay fairly close to the status quo if possible. So in talking with people, and I'm speaking only for myself, but my opinion was shaped by speaking with many, Scenario Two seems to be the one that is most favored. And we'd appreciate your consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munt.
Hello, commissioners, how are you?
Good evening. Please identify yourself.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas to you.
I come...
Again, sir, could you introduce yourself?
My, my name is Eduardo Gomez.
Thank you.
I live in South Hutchinson Island. I speak for myself at this meeting. After looking at the different scenarios, I would like to express a couple of simple I think that one of the topics that, that was covered here was the commonality of needs and interests in each of the different scenarios. To me personally, the, I, I think that in, that our interest in transportation, in sewage, in access to medical facilities, et cetera, is better served if we maintain unified North and South Hutchinson Island. And therefore, I personally prefer Scenario Number Three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll refer this back to Mr. Satterley, and we'll move on with what the commissioners would like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, if you have any questions of staff, we're happy to answer the questions and, you know, facilitate the, the conversation done. But it's, 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 it's your turn.
Thank you. Okay, it's open to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll go as the elder on the board as far, not just in age, but in experience. This is like the third time I've done this. And I just want to go on record, I've said it in the past, and I'll say it again. This county is not a single district representation. And so part of me takes a little bit of offense, you know, just a small, but I understand it. When I hear we want to be, you know, we want to make sure our commissioner is one person or it's two different people or however, this board has always represented the entire county, didn't matter where you lived in your district. We represent each and every resident. There are many times, and many of us have done this, where, you know, you may not call your commissioner, you'll call another commissioner. And we do that. We take care of it, doesn't, we don't ask you, what district do you live in? We take care of the issue as they come through. So I just wanted to clear the air and put that on the record. So when I look at the districting maps, the different scenarios, you know, the parts, there's the state legalities that we have to make sure of, and those are all done. And, I mean, I can remember, I think staff used to do this by hand, actually. And so it's nice to have the different, the computers part to do it now. That being said, the important parts on these things are not just the representation, but also how close you can get the numbers on the population itself within each district. The other part of that is we have to look at the future proposed growth that's not in these numbers, that's already two years old. So we don't have to come back in five years and redo this and stay with a continuous 10 If you look at that, and you look at, and I'm going to, it's in small print over there, but over on the side where it says Scenario One, and you're looking at the population in each of the districts, that scenario is about as close as you're going to get to being equal compared to the other two scenarios. The other part of that is four and five districts in District One also leave room for that growth that's already here, that's not yet counted in the census numbers, in the proposed growth that's coming forward. The best out of all three scenarios, if you're focusing on that. And that, to me, is more of an important part of this once you've met all the legalities of the state and federal requirements. So I understand the comments that are made, and they've been made in the past. I mean, I was on this board when both islands were together. And then there was the, everybody was upset when we split those the next 10 years later. So I just want to reassure you that each and every one of the commissioners that sit on this board, they represent all of you. It's not a single district where we have our own separate budgets or anything like that that goes on. Other counties may have that, but we don't.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Commissioner Zdowski?
Very good summary, and I, I was here for the last one. So, and I will, I don't know why I remember these things, but Mark will remember that I remember these things. It's a private joke, fine. But there was a, it was a 4-1 vote, and it was to, to separate the, the North and South Beach. I voted to keep it together, as South Beach had indicated, actually, North Beach even wanted it at that time. So that's a, a moot point, really, because when you talk about how the commissioners all have their strengths, Commissioner Hutchinson, you've been our, our sand, our sand empress for many, many years and have been the...
And I don't represent either beach, no.
See, exactly. That's my point.
That's my point.
And, and each of you knows that I've spent, you know, most of my adult life fighting for water quality in the lagoon and, and those types of things and, and the oceans. So, so that, that comes into play. And from a business standpoint, you know, Commissioner Townsend, you, you help to support the businesses of our communities and look for ways to, to, to enhance those, those opportunities. And Commissioner Mitchell, you're just everywhere. You're always there for, for, for everyone. And of course, you know, Commissioner Bartz has, has spent most of her later adult years in Port St. Lucie, representing the same constituents. So, you know, I think we all, as stated, have, have really represented, and I think Mr. Munt said it, that we haven't screwed it up in the last 10 years. So that's probably good, good news. You know, that being said, I, I don't really, I, I know everybody in, in, in my district and, and North and South Beach, and we certainly, our aides are, have been very important in being able to manage and bring folks in and have those open communications. So we all know pretty much all of our constituents anyway. I did have a question on Scenario, if, if this is one of questions, Scenario One, did we get the school districts all in the same areas? I know that District Four had a question from the school board that they wanted to be able to make sure that they were in, encompassing Verano. And I don't know that that went into District in Scenario One, but I do believe it went in Scenario Two. So...
We have, excuse, I don't mean to interrupt, but we have Mr. Sanders here from the school board. Would you like to confirm?
We can, we can also zoom in on Verano, on each of the scenarios, just so you can see where, where Verano is and which district it falls.
It was, it was, all the other commissioners from, from the school district were, were taken care of. I guess it was a, we had a situation where one of our commissioners might be moving and wanted to make sure that the future opportunity was there. So I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity for the school district to be in the same scenario. It's, it's not going to happen probably in the next scenario because we're going to be a very, very different map in the next 10 years. But if we can do it one more time and meet the same requirement. So can you get...
So in the Scenario One, Commissioner Verano is, which is to the south of P G A, so it's in District Five in this scenario?
Okay, and then... Scenario Two?
Scenario Two, Lori. And in Scenario Two, I think it...
It picks it up right there along the edge, I think.
Yeah, I think it's in, it's in, it's in...
It stays in...
It's in Four.
So you had asked Mr. Sanders if, is it okay to have Mr. Sanders represent the school? Sure. Because we only do this once every 10 years, and, you know, I guess the, the next time, I don't think it's ever going to be, there are going to be two separate maps for a school district, isn't it?
Hi, Marty Sanders, St. Lucie County School District Growth Management. You know, we had one councilperson ask about, you know, much like Mrs. Townsend, that she had an interest in moving into Verano. And the only scenario that was produced is, is Map Number Two that has her district within what we call the Verano North. It's the portion of Verano north of the C-24 Canal. So that would meet her desires, of course, Scenario Number Two.
Did everybody else fall in?
All of, all of the members are within their district where they live. So I don't believe, we do not have any concerns about their current residents of any of the school board members. Y'all did a very nice job of meeting those requirements and making sure that we were within the current districts where their, where their residents.
Okay, so, so for the publics, you know, we, we did kind of go over this as to how it affects the county-specific board of county commissioners. But in, in historically, we have tried to manage keeping the school district districts and the board of county commissioners districts to be very similar and to keep the same map so, to avoid some confusion. So that's why I'm asking the questions and, and trying to meet that, at least in this particular scenario. I don't know that it's going to happen in the future. I don't see it happening because we're going to be growing in so many different manners. The last thing is, well, I think, I think we're looking at One and Two is largely what we're really looking at. Commissioner Hutchinson?
But again, and I'm going to add to that, we've tried that, and we were able to do that for several years or several times. But as is the case, the school board still has the ability, if they don't like ours, they have the choice, they can go with a different one. So that's nothing, what we vote on doesn't set it in stone for the school board.
That's important to know.
And, and... Mr. Chair, one of the things that we, we were looking at adopting the same map, it, it does make it somewhat simpler for the supervisor election because there may be, these maps may actually bisect their precincts, so they have to re-precinct. And, you know, God forbid that we select different maps that cause more confusion and overlay of, of the precincts. But, you know, Commissioner Tal, Commissioner Hutchinson is correct, you know, the school board has the ability to adopt any map they wish, but we've historically, at least in the last four decades that I know of, have adopted the same maps. Again, we thought it was easier for the electorate and, and the supervisor of elections.
Okay, and I understand, and it doesn't preclude you from drawing your own maps. Thank...
Mr. Chair, and also, like, they don't live there currently, they're looking to move there. So Scenario One has them in the map right now currently, should they move. I know you've referenced me, but I've owned my property for years.
I get it.
It's not that, that we're changing a map for me because I've owned my property, and they've known for five years my intentions of moving there. So the difference is that your current board members are all within our map.
Correct.
Should only that one member decide to move.
And, and they'll have to deal with it, we get it.
And then that brings in more of a legal question. If we were to redistrict, it goes into effect immediately, does that put them in or out of their district?
No, they're, what he just said is they're in Scenario One, they're here.
They're in, right.
If she decides to move...
Then it becomes an issue.
Then, then she would be outside the district she currently is, if she moves.
Point well made. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion from the, from the dials?
I'll make, I'll make a couple of comments. I concur, actually, with, you know, Commissioner Hutchinson and Commissioner Zdowski, and I do think it's really important to point out that we do have relationships with our people that we currently have been serving, so should, should the boundaries change, I know that I speak for myself, but I'm sure I can say that the other commissioners would do it. I know that, like, some of the HOAs have always had me come out, and I enjoy that. So, if there is a change, I am still willing and able to come out and speak. I mean, because the relationships are already there, and I don't want those relationships to be lost. We do serve all of you, we serve all five districts, and so this is just basically, you know, to make sure that things are more, you know, fair with the population and everything. I don't know that we're gonna make every single person happy with the direction that we take, somebody's gonna be affected, but at the end of the day, we're all still here, and I know that it's gonna affect probably Districts, you know, Four and Five and One the most, but I know that the relationships that we have built, I know that, I look forward to those relationships continuing, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Townsend, I think that's right. We try, you know, to make sure that the people that you traditionally, you know, tend to work with, you know, Commissioner Hutchinson works with Indian River Estates, White City, you know, you're at the airport, and so we try to, you know, Commissioner Zdowski's been representing the city of Fort Pierce, so we, you know, we really tried to keep that in mind as well.
And I guess I'll speak last, and we can go on from there. To me, my, my district, although, and again, I represent every person that lives in this county, and I can speak on behalf of all our commissioners, that if I'll get a phone call, or my aide gets a phone call, of course, at a courtesy, we'll defer to the, to the district representative and the commissioner that it's in, but we're all in to help. Mine will be condensed, only because there's all the plots that you were talking about earlier. I rode around with my children a few weeks ago in a two-mile perimeter, I think there was eighty-four houses being built, just in that two-mile perimeter.
Yeah, no doubt.
So, it doesn't affect me as much as it does some others, so I'm willing to listen to the will of the board, and we'll come to a conclusion. Thank you. And what is the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to make a motion, I'm gonna be supporting Scenario One, mostly for the points that I picked out earlier, you know, on your district sizes and the room for expansion, to pull up the ability to get there.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Hutchinson for Scenario One. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Townsend?
I have a question.
Question?
Can we go back to Scenario Number Two, please? They're really, very, very closely aligned. And I had heard, I think we've all heard, from the North Beach Association and, and some of the South Beach Association as well, I'd be willing to look at Scenario Number Two, but there is a motion on the table. I just think that the other, the other aspect was keeping the maps the same if the District Four school district individual were to be able to have their future wishes granted, so to speak.
Okay, and again, I'm just gonna say, we represent every one of the, although I'm in District Two, I represent all of the county, as all do the other commissioners. So, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hutchinson, and we have a second by Commissioner Townsend. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Zdowski? Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
No, ma'am. So, now we have a tie. Well, so, let me ask you again-
Mr. Chair, can I just point out again, and I'm gonna go back and just, and Chris, I understand what you're saying, but again, I'm gonna ask you to look at the district numbers on the, comparing on the population. Your highest area, the districts for growth existing, that's come in the past two years and moving forward in the future with what's coming in, are District One, Four, and Five, which are all your lower numbers on the population. On Scenario One?
So, I can look at those numbers?
Okay, that's fine.
Please put on Scenario Two.
I'm just trying to point out why I'm supporting that one over, it's nothing to do with, because I go back to, we represent everybody.
The numbers look pretty similar. You're saying looking forward, Commissioner?
Looking, because you still have the next ten years, the Scenario One.
Go back to One, please.
See, I have the beauty of having it printed out, so I can look at it side by side. Can you put that population thing, just the two populations, side by side? Are we able to do that?
And, Mr. Chair, I think, I think Commissioner, the reason why I am okay with this is, I mean, I know that the residents are passionate, I'm passionate, I don't wanna lose North Beach. However, with that said, we know that the growth is coming in District Five, it's coming out of Endrio Road, all along Endrio Road and Emerson, we've got three houses, you know, we have houses coming. We've already got two approved projects over there, so we know that over the next ten years, there's gonna be a minimum of 10,000 houses being-
And Southern Groves, too, right?
Okay, and then I'm still down here on the South Side, so District Five is still going to be the fastest-growing district to the North and the South, and so because of that is why I was okay with Scenario One. Scenario Two, it kinda leaves it, however, and I'm good with Scenario Two, except for the fact, I don't like the fact that I'm being taken out of the airport. I've, I've got great relationships with those businesses in there, some of the growth is getting ready to come, and companies that are looking to come in, and so the airport is gonna be growing as well, so I either want one or two, I mean, those would be my top two picks, but because Commissioner Hutchinson has pointed out, and we all know, where the growth is coming, all along the northern corridor in the northern part of the county, is why I was okay with the Scenario One.
All right, go ahead and just leave that one up. There's District, there's Scenario Two, if you focus on the population numbers, and I'm just gonna read off what Scenario One is in comparison. District One, in Scenario One, is 65,455. District Two is 66,236. District Three is 66,326. District Four is 65,573. District Five is 6,000, 65,636. District Five's numbers don't really change.
By thirty, yeah.
But if you look at the other two hotspots, if you will, for what's coming in, it's District One and Four. Two and Three drop in numbers. They go down from 66,000 plus in Scenario One, down to the 65. I know you're looking at it here, passing down.
I see your point, I have it.
I mean, that's, that's what I was focusing on.
Yeah. Well, I just wanna point out, too, Commissioner Townsend, I know that the airport is important to you, but it has been for, since well before I ever ran for this commission, I ran for mayor, and the airport was, was my first platform, so it has been important to me as well.
No, I know, okay.
So, yeah.
It's important to all of us, but I'm just saying.
I just wanna let those folks out there who know that I've been driving the airport, that I still am.
And if I might interrupt, and I don't mean to interrupt, but-
You're the chair.
But even if, like, we went with Scenario Two, that doesn't mean Commissioner Townsend couldn't be a lead on the airport work, because even though it's not your district, we represent everybody, and I know the relationships you've made out there, Kathy, because when we had the groundbreaking at the MRO, you had music there, you had, it was a big deal, and I appreciate that, and I just want, want you to know that.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion? Because I don't, we can beat this up all night long, and I don't think we're gonna change anybody's minds, and that's not a bad thing, but we don't have a full board tonight. Can I recommend or suggest that we just move this here-
January eleventh?
No, no, I think we have to have it done by the end of the year-
Okay.
-to next week's meeting. I think we do have a normal nine o'clock meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, that would be my suggestion as well, unless any board member wants to change, I would suggest that you just continue this public hearing until Tuesday, December fourteenth, at nine AM, or soon thereafter, in hopes that we'll have a full board, and Commissioner Bartz can break the tie, and hopefully not pick alternative number three.
And because of an important decision like that, maybe, I think it would behoove us to have a full board here. And Mr. Sanders, did you wanna say something?
I do. Unfortunately, you know, the school district's on a similar parallel path, and I think we're gonna run out of time as well, so don't hold up on waiting on behalf of the school district, getting our stuff right, because we may make a decision next Tuesday night as well, independent of what you do, because we've, we've got, that's our last board meeting of the year, and I doubt very seriously we're gonna be able to have another, another meeting.
Well, I believe our meeting, Mr. Sanders, is in the morning, and yours will be in the evening, so you'll know how we, how we went, so I don't think it'll interfere with what you're proposing.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
All right, thank you. And we're okay with that, everyone?
Well, actually, let's just try this and see what happens. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for Scenario Two.
And I'll second that, and we're gonna, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
I hate to do this to you, Chris, but I want a full board here, so I'm gonna vote no. It would've been a tie, anyway, so we're gonna go, with the will of the board, we're gonna wait until next Tuesday at nine AM or soon thereafter, by advice of-
It's the fourteenth, 12th, fourteenth.
The fourteenth, I'm sorry, at nine AM or soon thereafter.
I could, it would be appropriate, I think, to, for a motion to continue the public hearing, so that we can put it on the record.
Motion to continue to 12th, to December fourteenth, at nine o'clock or soon thereafter.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Townsend, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And I'll, I'll put together a slide that has the populations side by side-
Dual screen.
Yeah, just to make it easy to see.
I think that'll help us, and thank you for the input from the community. Okay. Just gather my thoughts here, where we at? Okay, now will be Agenda Nine C One, which is a comprehensive plan implementation of the ten-year water supply.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there is Nine B One as the next item, we can certainly pass that if the board likes, but there is an item relating to designating the position of Assistant County Attorney Three in the senior management class. If the board wants to consider that now, we can-
Yeah, we can do that, and I apologize, Mr. Matt.
No, no worries, either way, whatever the board prefers. If the board is interested, this item relates, as I indicated, to a proposed resolution, which if adopted, would designate the position of Assistant County Attorney Three in the Florida State Retirement System Senior Management Service Class. That has been done with five current county positions, as indicated in the memo, there are a number of other positions open. We have done a classification study in the last year that identified the Assistant Attorney Three position as one of those that should be included in the senior management class. That has been done in other counties, including Indian River, Palm Beach, Manatee, and Osceola. We've drafted a resolution, which if adopted, would do that. We recommend that you approve, staff recommends, the county attorney recommends that you approve the resolution and authorize the chair to sign the resolution. This is a public hearing, as you indicated, Mr. Chair.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, what's the will of the board?
Move, approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Matt.
Thank you, sir.
Now, moving on to Item Nine C One. Jody?
Good evening, Chair Mitchell, and members of the board. Congratulations, Chair Mitchell. My name is Jody Cookler with the Planning and Development Services, representing Item Nine C One. This is the ten-year water supply plan, the adoption hearing. Staff is requesting this item be postponed to the January eleventh, 2022 meeting. Since the, this meeting, this came before you on October fifth, and it was postponed to the November second, and we're requesting another postponement. Since the November second, the South Water Management has provided us comments, and our consultant is working on implementing those comments, and also, the 2021 Upper East Coast Plan was adopted by South Water Management, which we are required to update our plan within eighteen months, so we were trying to, we are incorporating those updates within our work plan, so we would not have to come back before you in eighteen months, and this will put our plan in compliance for five years.
Thank you. So, staff is asking to request a continuance.
But you have to open and close the public hearing?
Oh, okay.
Open and close it.
All right, we opened a public hearing, is there anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we will close public hearing.
Motion to move forward.
Motion by Commissioner Townsend, second by Commissioner Zdowski.
Just for a discussion moment, please.
Any discussion?
I would just like to go on record, this'll be the last time I'll be supporting a continuance of it, however.
And just for clarification, that's January eleventh, at six PM, or soon thereafter?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And I, I too will not continue again after that, it needs to go forward.
Okay, you got your margin orders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Moving on, and this item is quasi-judicial, and this is Nine C Two. So, being quasi-judicial, should we ask prior to the presentation?
Whatever.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have had no correspondence with anyone short of the staff.
Thank you.
Only spoken with staff.
Only staff.
And I concur only, I've only spoken to staff on this.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Tahereh Curry, Associate Planner with the St. Lucie County Planning and Development Services Department. Agenda Item Nine C Two is a mobile home permit for Leonhart Mobile Home, to define a 28-by-44 Class A mobile home as a single-family guest house dwelling, pursuant to the Land Development Code, Section 110502E, located at 9710 Russo Road, Fort Pierce, Florida. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 110003 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notices were advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on November 24th, 2021. Notices were sent out to eleven surrounding property owners within 500 feet, a signed petition site, the planning department had not received any responses for this mobile home petition. The subject petition is outlined and read. The applicant are requesting to authorize to install a 28-by-44 mobile home on the 27.24 acre property as a guest house. The property has an existing single-family resident that was constructed in 2018. The subject site is located within the Agriculture One, AG One zoning district, and surrounding properties has a zoning designation of AG One, Agriculture One zoning designation. has a zoning designation of AG One Agriculture One zoning designation. Here are some pictures of the mobile home. The classic mobile home meets the exterior dimensions, the exterior finishes of the roof and walls, and a skirting similar to that of detached, single-family dwelling units. The home meets the following. The width of the proposed mobile home is twenty-eight feet, which exceeds the twenty feet minimum horizontal dimension requirement. Number two, the proposed mobile home roof pitch is three by twelve. The roof material consists of black shingles. Number four, the exterior, the exterior, the exterior materials consist of vinyl sliding, brown color, and the skirting is white. The petition conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section eleven oh five oh two E, and is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan Goals, Objectives, and Policies. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the Class A mobile home permit as a detached, single-family dwelling unit guest house within the Agriculture One zoning district. This concludes my presentation, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please come up and identify yourself, sir.
Uh, good evening, my name is Eric Leonhart, I, I'm at ninety-seven ten Russo Road, and, sorry, I'm not good with that, but, um, yeah, so, I'm putting that out for my parents, we've been residents here for fifty years, um, they, they live in a big, like, property now, and they're getting ready to sell that, and then I'm gonna take care of them on my property, and that's basically all I.
Well, I have a ninety-five-year-old mother, and I admire what you do for taking care of your parents, so, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just want to ask the applicant, you've seen the conditions of approval, the two that they're asking of you, have you seen these, that you're in agreement to them?
Excuse me?
The conditions of approval that the sole disturbance removal vegetation, have you seen these?
Um, I don't believe I have.
Has he seen these?
I don't believe so, no.
Because, I mean, this is the conditions of the approval, I want to confirm that he's okay with these.
No surprises.
There's no surprises, do you want to look at them?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Townsend, for bringing that to his attention.
Okay, no, it, no, it is, I'm just saying, I didn't want this board to approve something, and then you
Yeah, have, get like surprises.
Have this, and then you not know anything about it, so I just wanted to confirm that you were aware that there were two approvals, is all.
And you're okay with that, sir?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you for your input.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, yeah.
Again, this is a public hearing, would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public hearing, and
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Hutchinson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir. And to your parents. Moving right along, item number three, which is Arcosa Conditional Use Petition, again, this item is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken to staff.
Staff?
I've only spoken with staff.
And myself also, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Mitchell, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chris McCray, I'm Associate Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department, and tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item nine C three, for a conditional use petition submitted by CNC Family Groves and White City Grove Incorporated. The request is to allow a concrete manufacturing facility as a permitted use within the proposed Arcosa planned non-residential development, and as you stated, this is a quasi-judicial item. In addition, I will also be presenting Agenda Item nine C four, for requested rezone from Agricultural Residential One Dwelling Unit per acre to the planned non-residential development zoning district, and a preliminary PNRD, or Planned Non-Residential Development Site Plan Approval for seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot concrete manufacturing facility, a four thousand square foot office and associated site improvements. This is also a quasi-judicial public hearing, and although I'm presenting these items together, they have to be voted on separately.
Okay, thank you.
In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, advertisement for these public hearings were advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. In addition, notices were mailed to adjacent property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject properties, and two signs are placed, one at the intersection of Favorite Road and Salvage Road, and the second on the subject property. Thirty-five point zero five acre subject site is located on the north side of the unimproved Favorite Road right-of-way, situated approximately three hundred feet west, I'm sorry, east of Post Office Road and three hundred feet west of Salvage Road. The subject parcels are designated by the mixed-use future land use, with residential suburban land use situated to the east and southeast, public facilities to the south, and industrial to the west. The city of Fort Pierce's transportation utilities land use designation is located to the north of the subject property. Pursuant to the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, the subject parcels are identified as the Casson's Mixed Use Activity Area, and are restricted to industrial land uses with future development to be approved through the planned non-residential development process, and include appropriate open space and buffering adjacent to residential properties. It also states that the access must be provided from the west via Favorite Road, thus restricting any traffic from traveling east to Salvage Road. The subject property is designated by the Agricultural Residential One Dwelling Unit per acre zoning district, and properties zoned residential, single-family to, and agricultural residential one to the east and southeast, include single-family dwellings on parcels one acre or larger. The properties to the south are zoned institutional and include the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office, New Horizons, and the United States Postal Office. The vacant parcels to the west are zoned industrial-heavy, and the land situated to the north is located within the jurisdiction of the city of Fort Pierce. Through the planned non-residential development approval process, this application is seeking a redesignation of the subject parcels from the Agricultural One zoning district to the planned non-residential zoning district. The submitted preliminary plan identifies a seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot manufacturing facility with an enclosed silo and aggregate storage bins, a four thousand square foot office, and approximately ten and a halfs acre lay-down yard for finished product. The associated site improvements include improvements to Favorite Road from Post Office Road to provide site access, inclusive of a five-foot right-of-way dedication and water and wastewater connection with the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority. Vehicular use parking and loading area improvements, onsite stormwater management, including dry, dry detention, and a five-and-a-half acre lake, and a required eight-foot tall opaque fence and associated landscaping. The preliminary plan provides the following separations from the residential properties to the east. There's a seven hundred and sixty-nine foot separation from the sixty-foot tall silo, eight hundred feet between the proposed manufacturing plant, and approximately a hundred and fifty-four feet of separation between the product lay-down yard and the properties to the east. In addition to the separation provided from the proposed structures, the proposal requires the applicant to provide a ten-foot landscape buffer along the property boundaries, and a fifteen-foot landscape buffer adjacent to Road right-of-way. Furthermore, when the non-residential development abuts residential, the code requires that an eight-foot tall masonry wall or opaque fence and perimeter tree plantings with a continuous hedge to be planted on both sides of the barrier, in accordance with Land Development Code, Section seven oh nine oh four. The preliminary plan identifies an eight-foot tall opaque fence with required landscaping to be constructed along the eastern property line adjacent to these residential properties. Upon the approval of the preliminary planned non-residential development site plan, the applicant must receive final site plan approval pursuant to Land Development Code, Section eleven point zero two point zero five, and according to Land Development Code, Section eleven point zero two point zero two, Section B, any non-residential development, I'm sorry, any non-residential use up to five hundred thousand square feet for developments identified under the county's targeted industry list shall be designated as a minor site plan, and may receive administrative approval from the Director of Planning and Development Services, following the review and certification from the Development Review Committee. The applicant has submitted a concurrent minor site plan application and final site plan documents, which is currently being reviewed by the Development Review Committee. According to the applicant, the office will employ approximately seven, six to seven people, while the manufacturing plant will employ twenty-five to thirty employees over two shifts of fifteen, ten to fifteen employees each. The hours of operation for the manufacturing plant are proposed between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, Monday through Friday, with occasional shifts on the weekends for maintenance, and the office hours between the hour, between eight AM and five PM. Deliveries are scheduled between the hours of eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday, and the typical length of these poles, there would be between eighty and a hundred feet, and they manufacture approximately six to seven poles per day, with approximately ten to twelve poles delivered per week. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices were, and response forms were mailed to adjacent property owners within five hundred feet of the subject properties. And of the thirty notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services Department received four responses for the conditional use permit. Two of the responses received are in favor, and two responses were received, I'm sorry, two of the responses were received, not in favor, and two received in favor of the conditional use. On November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and unanimously voted to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners, with the following recommended conditions for the board to consider. The required eight-foot, eight-foot tall opaque fence or wall shall be constructed of concrete or brick instead of vinyl. The hours of operation shall be limited between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, and the project site shall be equipped with appropriate dust debatement protocols, including a sprinkler system to assist in reducing the spread of dust particles to adjacent properties. The conditional use conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the Land Development Code, Section eleven point zero seven point zero three, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners approve the conditional use to allow concrete manufacturing as a permitted use within the Arcosa planned non-residential development. And furthermore, the proposed PNRD rezone and preliminary site plan conform to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Sections eleven point zero six point zero three and eleven point zero two point zero seven, and are also consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Staff is also recommending the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Arcosa planned non-residential development rezone and preliminary site plan, subject to the following conditions of approval. The planned non-residential development and conditional use permit shall comply with the county's noise ordinance. All operations shall be limited between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. The required eight-foot tall opaque fence or wall shall be constructed of concrete brick, concrete or brick, sorry, instead of the vinyl. And the development shall be equipped with appropriate dust debatement protocols, including a sprinkler system to assist in reducing the spread of dust particles to adjacent properties. All onsite crane and forklift equipment shall be equipped with a white noise backup alarm, approved by the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, also known as OSHA. Prior to the final minor site plan approval, the applicant shall provide an acceptable turn analysis and truck movement plan for review and compliance with southbound turn movements onto Post Office Road from the subject site. And also, the, prior to the issuance of a vegetation removal permit or exemption, a hundred percent gopher tortoise survey shall be conducted by a state-certified gopher tortoise agent per Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission protocols. And the last condition is, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all category one listed invasive species shall be eradicated from the site. This concludes staff's presentation, the applicant and the representing agents are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, again, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Seeing no one from the public, we will close. It's not public.
May I ask a question before we go into that?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, Chris, obviously, in your, the individual who was against is next to the east-south corner of the property. By the schematic I see here, there is a significant buffer between that property and the actual manufacturing center, which is in the northwest section. Is that about, what, a thousand feet, some, some significant? I just want to make sure, you're going to build the eight-foot wall, that's one good thing, you're gonna landscape it, but from the standpoint of, of the, where the manufacturing and the noise are likely to come, there's a significant distance between that property, that, I'm gonna, it's the, it's the one that you gave us, that has the, the, number five is the property number, so if you look, so that's, that's fifty, a hundred and fifty feet just from the corner of the edge, but from the corner all the way to the manufacturing center, which is in the northwest corner, that's, if that's a hundred and fifty, I'm gonna say three, four fifty, five, it's about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred feet. So that's a significant buffer.
Correct.
Now, the other thing you said about Favorite Road, they're gonna contribute to the, to the improvement of Favorite, but they're only going to go to the west, correct?
That's correct. So they're improving, they're also dedicating five feet of right-of-way, but they would only be improving just a portion of the proper, to the property line, and access would be limited only to the west on Post Office Road.
All right, because
Nothing would, would traverse through.
Yeah, Salvage would not be able to accept a hundred and eighty to eight hundred-foot, you know, pole coming out of that, that, that little turn.
Of course.
And the other is, there's been conversation with FDOT on that, because if they're gonna be coming out, they're gonna do a right turn probably only out of, uh, Post Office. And I'm gonna look at you, Brad, because it crossed four lanes of traffic, we're gonna widen that to four lanes. Uh, that's gonna be a difficult task unless you're gonna put a light or some kind of flag persons, has that been taken into consideration?
Commissioner Zdowski, for the record, Brad Curry with EUC. Both, when, when these vehicles do go out, they have a, I can't remember the name, I use a chaperone, they'll have a car in front, a car in back that will stop traffic or, or assist them in making these maneuvers where there's difficulty. We're not expecting there to be any difficulty at the midway road intersection, but they do have a car in the back and a car in the front. Typically, when these poles do get delivered or leave the facility, they leave it a couple trucks at a time, so they, there's a convoy that goes along with it, so, so yes, sir, we will have, we'll take that into consideration, we will contact DOT, it is a condition of the site plan that we have to have stuff worked out.
And the other would be, if there's a median there, now you're definitely stuck, just going right turn only out of there.
And that's what, that's what our intent is, I don't know, I mean, technically, I don't know how you restrict it, but the reality is, is most of these poles are gonna be getting out to the turnpike or to I ninety-five and going north or south, so.
Okay, all right, those are my questions, thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Townsend.
Chris, when we spoke in the office, is it my understanding now that they have flipped the office to the front part, to the west? Or is it still back between where the residential is? Is, is the office on the east side of the property or the west side?
The office is on the west side.
Okay.
Just as it's shown right here on this, on this screen.
Because I thought I saw something that, originally, that it wasn't to the west, it was to the east.
No, it's, it's always been like this.
So, Mr. Curry, I have a question. Is there any way that the office can be switched, because the office is not gonna have the manufacturing going on? to have the manufacturing going on and put the manufacturing more to the west so that the office is between where they would be doing the work and the neighbors? I know there's going to be a buffer, there's going to be a wall, but to have more privacy and to have the bulk of the work being done out to the west where it's more zoned for that anyways to the west and put the office to the back of the property?
Commissioner Townsend, we did look at that while we were doing this process and based on the way other facilities are run and based on the turning movements of the trucks coming in and out, it just seemed like it was better in this configuration and we felt like we had sufficient buffering with this configuration. So we, we did take a look at that, but overall, from a, from a process standpoint, from the way the site works, it made most sense to lay it out this way.
Are you there for questions or do you want to speak?
We, we actually have a presentation, Mr. Chair. If you don't mind, we could go through it very quickly.
Absolutely.
Give me a second here. I had it up and...
I know you had it up. There we go.
So, kind of get started here. For the record, I'm Brad Curry with Engineering Design and Construction representing the applicant tonight and two requests before you for conditional use and for a rezoned a PNRD. Always like to, to bring us back a little bit to where a couple of months ago, I think we came forward with some changes to the PNRD code and I think during that meeting, I famously said that I'd never done a PNRD in, in St. Lucie County. Well, tonight we had two and if, if the other one had gone through, we could have had three tonight. So I just want to say very complimentary to staff. I enjoyed working with them and getting that change and I think the fruits of our labor are coming to fruition here, so it's good. With me here tonight is, is the applicant, Chip Chandler, and Larry Price, and they're from Arcosa. If you guys don't mind introducing yourselves.
Sure. Larry Price, General Manager, Arcosa Concrete Pole Business Unit. So we're a unit within the larger Meyer utility structures, which to date has been predominantly steel poles and we're bringing concrete poles to the unit. And then Meyer and concrete is part of the Arcosa. So our, the Arcosa label is over all of this, but that's kind of where we fit into the org structure.
And I'm Chip Chandler. I'm the Senior Manager for Product Development.
So staff did an excellent job presenting. During the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there were a lot of questions brought up and I thought we would do this, I don't know if we're going to start this, if I'm going to create a terminology night, but do this Rich Sampson style where I sit here, control the PowerPoint and my client goes and adds where things where I, where I mess, where I don't know or don't know all the details of. So hopefully it works, it worked well for Mr. Sampson, so hopefully it works well for us. So this, this presentation is going to show some of the things that are going to be happening on the site. Some of the video quality doesn't sound great. Actually, I wanted to turn the sound down before I get there. Because I didn't want to blast it. Not that, not that the things are loud, but the recording video is loud. Somebody else is controlling the mouse. So this is the, the batch plant overview. This is going to be what's on the north end. Now, we only have one silo on this property. The picture to the bottom left shows two silos. Over to the right, you don't really see the silo, but the, the way this works is you have a couple of different materials. You have a cement material, you have a coarse rock, which we have examples of over there, and then you have a batch screen, which is a, which is a type of sand. The batch screen, a, a normal sand particle is 2.1 is the size and the bat, the block screening is 2.9 or larger. So this is larger than a normal grain of sand. The rock that's used in this is a washed rock that has no dust that when it comes to the site. We'll have videos in here show the rock being dumped onto the site and put into the batch plant. So the materials you can see in the bottom right-hand corner are stored there and then they're picked up, they're dumped there and then they, there's a loader that's used to load into the, into the batch plant. The batch plant has, again, those three materials, the cement, the, the block always kept, the block screening, which is a sand, and then the, the 57 stone or the stone mix. Those are the three components that make up these poles. That, that house that you see here is, is where the materials are stored and then they're dropped down into the mixing unit and we have more videos that show that. So during the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there's some discussions about how the cement gets to the site. These are the types of trucks that deliver the cement to the site, fully enclosed trucks, tanker trucks, no ability for the material to blow out or to create dust on the site. Then there was discussions about how does the cement get from the truck into the silo? It's actually pumped with a pipe and you can see that on the right-hand side of your screen here and there's actually a video next of, of showing that pumping happening. So there's never a situation where the, there's somebody with a shovel putting it into the silo or with a loader, it's all done pumped. This is a example of it being pumped. Again, I'm sorry, it's a little bit dark outside on this, but you can see the trucks there, the hose going out the back and being pumped into the silo. Just gives you an example of what that looks like. Again, really no dust that gets produced during that process. So we talked about washed rock a lot during the Planning and Zoning Board meeting and I, I actually didn't even know what a washed rock was. I mean, it seems pretty self-explanatory, but it's, it's required because there's, they don't really want any dirt or anything into this mix when they're building these poles. So this is just an example of, of the washed rock. This is not happening on the property. The washed rock comes to the facility already washed. Just wanted you guys to see that that's the type of material that's being used. And then this, sorry for the graininess of the video, this is a truck dumping that washed rock out at a site. You can see that there's not really a lot of dust that's there and as it pulls away, sorry, I think the video is frozen a little bit. But that's, you get an idea there. That's where it's stored and it's picked up and put into the, to the batch plant. So you can see that over on the right-hand side, you see the loader picking up the washed rock. You can see where the loader dumps the rock and then you see the loader dumping the rock and then the video should show that process all in one. This is the washed rock. So how does the washed rock get into the batch plant, into the mixer? It's run with a conveyor belt that you see here and this is pretty much inside of that batch plant that we talked about, not outside. And again, it's washed rock, so there's no dust.
You guys can jump in at any moment.
Yeah, you're doing great. Keep it up. And then the other component of this is those three materials that we've talked about, how do they get mixed? Those, these are different types of mixers on the right-hand side. Looks like a, a little bit like a, a space, sort of space thing where you Apollo. And again, it's all enclosed, the three materials go in, they get it mixed with water and you can see the mix happening here. That's what it looks like on the inside when the, the concrete's being mixed with the three materials. So then it gets loaded into a flying bucket, which I think is a great name, and it gets dropped into the pole. And so this video shows the, the bucket being loaded with the concrete mix. And then this next video shows the concrete being delivered to where the pole is. Again, all of this is happening inside. These are just some pictures of the, of the pouring hopper and then the gentleman laying out the pole on the inside and then they're, they're closing in the mold on the right-hand side. And then the mold gets put into a spinner and it gets spun and that's what causes the concrete to get to the outside and then it's Saturday night. Dust collection is a big part of, of any batch plant, not just this one. Any batch plant that gets done, you'll see, you'll always see on a silo, you'll see a little thing on the top that, that helps with, well, that reduces all of the dust that would come out of this facility or out of this silo. So there's literally no dust that comes out of the silo associated with the cement mix. This is an overall kind of view of, of the process, starting with the cement truck to the left and then with the finished pole down in the bottom right. You can see the spinners along the bottom and everything that we've talked about so far. And then this is the mold that is used to, to make the poles, the spinner and then the poles being, being lifted up and, and stored. That storage yard is going to store the poles that you see on the right-hand side. And these are the types of trucks that are going to be used, our equipment, forklifts and, and loaders, that sort of thing. That's what's going to be used on this property. There's a gantry crane that you do see in that upper right. That, that's very slow-moving crane. There's some discussions about it making noise. It's, it's, it goes at like four miles an hour and it, it will have that white noise backup, so there's really no, no noise associated with that as well. And plus, we're so, such a far distance away from the residential. That concludes my presentation. We, I, I'm here to answer any questions. We reviewed the conditions of approval. We're in 100% agreement with the conditions of approval. Chip and Larry and I have read them and, and, and we're, we're in good shape. These, these guys are very interested in getting moving forward as soon as possible. They're ready to open. So we respectfully request approval tonight and if you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Any questions from, from the DIs?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski and a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Does anyone need a break?
If you're taking one, keep going.
Keep going.
Okay, we'll keep going. Now, these are, oh, that was, now, hold on, because I think we had to do three and then four separate, correct?
Yes.
So we just approved three A, we'll call it three A and four.
So open, open item four, public hearing, close it and we'll come back to the board. He's already done the presentation.
I was ready to do that, but thank you. So we're on, we closed that. We'll open for public comment on number four. Anyone from the audience, from the public, seeing none, we'll close that.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend and a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to number five.
Again, for the record, my name is Chris McCray, Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department and tonight I'm presenting Agenda Item 9C5 for a petition submitted by Travel Camp LLC for a small-scale comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, advertisement for this public hearing was placed in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on Wednesday, November 24th, 2021. And notices were mailed to adjacent property owners within 500 feet of the subject properties as well as a sign placed on the property. Petition pertains to a 4.95 acre vacant parcel located on the east side of US Highway One, approximately 800 feet south of Easy Street and the Indian River State's residential subdivision. The subject property is designated by the Commercial General Zoning District. However, the property contains split future land use designations with the northern portion designated by the commercial future land use and the southern 1.75 acres designated by the Transportation Utilities Future Land Use. This petition for an amendment to the future land use map will provide a, a uniform commercial future land use designation across the entire parcel while also providing compatibility for the existing Commercial General Zoning District. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners authorize the adoption of the future land use map amendment from Transportation Utilities to the commercial future land use. And this is the second public hearing adoption reading for this public item.
Again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone here from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public, uh, public meeting. We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, the second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to number six.
Good evening again, Chair Mitchell and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with Planning and Services Department. Tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9C6, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment to Create a New Element Entitled Property Rights. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, this public hearing was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on Friday, November 26th, 2021. The proposed amendment is required due to the new legislative mandates effective July 1st, 2021. In particular, House Bill 59, growth management requires all local governments to have a property rights element included in their comprehensive plan. The legislation modified Chapter 163.3177 of the Florida statutes to add a property rights element as one of the required elements within the comprehensive plans. The legislation also limits the ability to adopt any other comprehensive plan amendments initiated after July 1st from being adopted until the property rights element is adopted. The state defines amendments initiated after July 1st, 2021 as those amendments which have their first public hearing, in our case, a public and, a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing or after that date. This proposed amendment will add a new element in the comprehensive plan. House Bill 59 states that a local government may adopt the statement of rights as set forth in Chapter 163. Local governors may, governments may also adopt their property rights element so as long as the element does not conflict with the state statement of rights listed within House Bill 59. The proposed element meets the intent of the language within the House Bill. On November 17th, 2021, staff received correspondence from the Department of Economic Opportunity identifying a comment related to the aver, adverse impacts to important state resources and facilities within the department's authorized GOPA plan. The department's comment stated prior to adoption, the proposed amendment must be revised to consider property rights in all county local decision-making. The draft ordinance has been updated to reflect the revisions as requested by Department of Economic Opportunity. If you see in front of you the screen, the, the proposed amendment to transmittal hearing on October 5th, the language was planning and development. As you can see, we strike through it, strike through it and then the highlighted and underlying is the new language that the, the DEO would like us to use. On October 15th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommend unanimously the Board of County Commissioners adopt a comprehensive plan amendment to create a new element entitled property rights. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the standards of review set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 11.06.03, and the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, Goals, Objectives, and Policies. Staff recommends the Board approve the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment to create a new element entitled property rights. Thank you. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is number seven. And this is, item is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff.
Only spoken with staff.
Staff.
And myself, staff.
Good evening again. For the record, Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9C7 for a planned non-residential development petition submitted by Engineering Design and Construction on behalf of Wawa Florida LLC to allow a gas station with alcohol sales as a permitted use within the proposed Wawa Midway and Salvage planned non-residential development. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, advertisement for this public hearings were advertised in the St. Lucie Tribune on Friday, November 26th, 2021. In addition, notices were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject properties and two signs were placed on the subject property, one at Midway, Midway Road and the second sign was placed on Salvage Road. The 6.02 vacant parcel, subject outlined is red, and outlined in red, is located on a northwest corner of Midway Road and Salvage Road in Fort Pierce. The future land use designation is commercial, which allows for permitted uses within the commercial neighborhood, commercial office, and commercial general zoning districts. The subject parcel is designated by the CN Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District. The adjacent zoning designations include commercial neighborhood and AR1 to the east, AR1 to the north and west, and the city of Port St. Lucie District located to the south. The submitted preliminary plan identifies a 5,820 square foot convenience store with alcohol sales and outdoor seating, a canopy which includes eight gasoline pumps and 16 fueling positions associated with site improvements, including onsite water retention area, water and wastewater connections with city, with Fort Pierce Utilities Authority, an eight-foot opaque tall wall fence, and 23%, 23% of open space provided, which only 20% is required. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting regarding the subject petition on July 8th of this year. Approximately 15 residents attended. The residents to the north, which is outlined in green, expressed concerns regarding the applicant to maintain the existing tree canopy to expressed concerns regarding the applicant to maintain the existing tree canopy to buffer the noise and light pollution. The representative from Wawa agreed to maintain the existing tree line outlined in green. In addition to the separation provided for the proposed structures, the proposal requires the applicant to provide a ten-foot landscape buffer along with all property boundaries and a fifteen-foot landscape buffer adjacent to rightaways. Further, furthermore, when a non-residential development abuts residential, the code requires an eight-foot tall masonry wall or opaque fence, and a pramer tree plantings and continuous hedge should be placed on both sides of the barrier in accordance to Land Development Code, section seven oh nine oh four. The submitted preliminary site plan identifies an eight-foot tall opaque fence and required landscaping will be constructed along the western and northern property lines adjacent to the residential properties. In accordance with the public notices outlined in section eleven point zero zero point zero three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and responses form were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject property. Of the twenty-eight notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services shall receive their responses. The proposed planned non-residential development rezone and preliminary site plans conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, section eleven point zero six point zero three and eleven point zero two point zero seven, and have been found to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. At the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the planned non-residential development and preliminary site plan, subject to the following condition of approval. Access as shown on the preliminary site plan is not approved with this application. Any proposed access beyond this side property adjacent to Midway will require a cross-access agreement with the adjacent property owners prior to final approval of the site plan. Thank you, and this concludes staff presentation. The applicant and the representative are here to answer any questions you may have.
And again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about this subject matter?
Chairman, while the applicant representatives coming forward, I would like to ask a couple of questions regarding to the in, ingress and egress of the actual property. And the reason being is Salvage is a, is a, uh, two-lane road, currently four-lane, recently expanded. And if there's left turn out of the Salvage north, uh, that can create some challenges. I think there's also a median adjacent to the north of that proposed, uh, entrance and exit. And then the other is on Midway Road, is there a suggested right turn lane in? Because we're gonna have a four lane there, uh, and you can see how there could be some challenges with rear-end collisions, and then whatever's going to come into the western parcel, same, same scenario there. So those are my concerns from a traffic standpoint, uh, from a safety standpoint. So if, if I can ask Mr.?
Good evening, um, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Brad Curry with EDC, um, representing the applicant Wawa in a request before you tonight for a PNRD rezone. The access on, on Salvage will be a right-in, right-out only. There's a, there is a median there, so there's not the ability to make a left-hand turn on Salvage. And then on Midway Road, we aren't proposing any turn lanes right now. David Baggett in my office went to a DOT meeting where along the western boundary of this property, you should be able to see on the plan, we're gonna have a shared access with our property or to the west, and DOT is proposing to construct a left end there. So there isn't any discussion, as far as I know, about a right turn lane into our property, but David may be able to answer that question better.
And the reason being is it's right there near the intersection. It's probably may, maybe two hundred feet from the intersection to your first entrance. So that, you're gonna have a lot of traffic turning right on red, and you're also gonna have the traffic that's moving from, uh, from the east to the west. So that's, that's a challenge that I see is, is gonna be some concern for incursions.
Correct, yeah. Uh, for the record, David Baggett, Engineering Design and Construction, Port St. Lucie. Our first step on this was to reach out both to county staff and FDOT, um, because there's obviously ongoing coordination for the widening of Midway Road coming up. That's a couple of years out, but, uh, what we did is we went to, uh, their public meeting and, and made ourselves known, our presence known on that corner, so they could start coordinating that. The residents to the west of us, uh, got in DOT's ear a little bit earlier than we did and had, that was really, you know, proactive in coordinating, wanting some access there because they have larger horse trailers and, and things like that, um, that they did not want to, uh, they were concerned about having to make U-turns once that widening happens out in that intersection, Midway and Salvage. So what you don't see here, and actually on the updated, um, PNRD plan we have, is we, we've got that access further to the west now proposed to be a shared access with those folks there. DOT is planning a left turn there.
Left turn from west to east?
Uh, left turn, uh, right, to, to the north. So left turn lane heading north into those properties on the north side. So yes, east, so if you're, if you're eastbound, you have left turn.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, there's, there's a currently, uh, is there a?
Isn't there a median there? Right now, there's a median.
So the, so FDOT's anticipating a?
For the, in, in the future widening that they're doing, they are anticipating to have that access. Reason being is you kinda hit, they're, they're not gonna get a left turn any closer to that intersection. The median separation, the, the separation to the left turn lane from that intersection wouldn't work. Uh, so, you know, we're trying to accommodate that, knowing that we've got neighbors to worry about and work with DOT to make sure that access is planned there. As far as the right-in, right-out goes closer to the intersection, um, we, we haven't been able to commit to a turn lane there because DOT right now has a bus stop planned at that intersection. So we're trying to work with staff. We're, we're level with, this is a zoning application, so this will come back before staff for us to work with engineering to kinda tease those finer details out. If, 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 if we're gonna be able to squeeze one in or not. But right now, DOT kinda had already planned a, a bus stop there. They, they, their take, and, and I don't wanna speak too much on their behalf, was it seemed like a good location without knowing what would be present there. They were able to, you know, based on where other bus stops were in the area, made sense to have one there. So we're trying to work with not messing up their plan, accommodate the bus stop where we can, have access where, you know, we need it.
It can be, it can be a dual-use turn lane, too. The bus can stop in.
Correct, they, they, they do have a standard.
There's one at all these, at US one in, in, in Ohio, so, so that can be done.
Right.
Then my other question really is, St. Lucie County has spent a significant amount of money on landscaping in that corridor, uh, working with our friends to the south in Port St. Lucie. And so, um, there, there are significant, uh, mature trees in that area. I was wondering if you were going to upgrade your, um, your, uh, trunk, uh, circumference to a larger oak tree or whatever it is you're gonna put in there to a more substantial level to meet what the county has invested in that intersection already.
Chris Zadowski, currently the plan before you does not show, it shows a code minimum, which is a two-and-a-half-inch DBH tree planted every thirty feet. I think that we would entertain something larger if that's what, if that was the desire.
That's my big one, so I'm glad you brought that up, Chris.
Okay.
But go ahead, I'll let you finish.
Um, we only heard that there was some comparison to what was desired based on, um, what was done by DOT. And DOT has, it, I believe they planted an eight-inch tree every thirty feet, which I believe is a bit excessive because the trees will grow together and actually fight for themselves. I talked to my landscape architect on the way here this afternoon, and he said it was kinda like families fighting over Thanksgiving dinner, and that there's only a certain amount of food, and everybody fights over it. And so he suggested if we were gonna do that large of a tree, that we spaced them out more, at least forty feet, maybe even fifty feet, just to give the trees the ability to grow. I'm not a landscape architect, but I, I enjoy speaking with my landscape architect, and he said that most of these trees are grown in a, in a pot, and when they get put in the ground, they take off. And he says it's not like a normal two-and-a-half-inch tree, that the bigger trees seem to fill out much quicker than a two-and-a-half-inch tree. So his recommendation would be, he actually said fifty feet, um, but I, I would like to, you know, say either forty to fifty feet. And then the, um, the size of the tree could be, um, six to eight inches or whichever. I mean, there was a range, I think it's about three hundred feet of frontage there, and if you did tree every thirty feet, that would be ten trees. Just to give you a feel for how many trees we're talking about along the front, along Midway Road.
On, 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 long just on Midway or the whole perimeter?
We just, we only looked at Midway, Commissioner Hutchinson, I did not look at, at Salvage. I assume it's about three hundred feet, we'll actually have the planner here in front of me.
Because I'm, if I?
It's three thirty-two on Salvage, so it's about ten trees on each property on, eh, eh, one for every thirty feet.
So it'd be ten trees on each side.
Ten, ten trees on Salvage and ten trees on, on Midway, I'm sorry, yes.
May I?
Sure.
I didn't know if Commissioner Zadowski was done. Um, I'm gonna follow up on this one because this was, it was me. Brad, I figured you knew that one. With everything we've put into Midway Road and the state's putting into it and wants to come, and this board actually set money aside in the budget this year to do the landscaping improvements down on the, um, west end from ninety-five in. This is gonna be like in a Hallmark entrance, if you will. And the intent is to hopefully, where Midway Road has always been considered to be a dividing line, that maybe this will now make it unify both, or all three, if you will. So I'm gonna push my limit a little bit more. I would really prefer the bigger trees. And I would even be saying, and to be fair about it, and I don't know if I can do this by code, I'd even forego some of the hedge material for those bigger trees because they're gonna get, they're gonna die out anyway with the shade and stuff. But I would also like to ask if you would consider, since you have to have lighting, if you would like to, uh, consider matching the lighting that we have now up there on the, um, front from US one to Twenty-Fifth Street, what I always call the pretty pretties. They're very unique to the, um, white city area, and it would be nice to see that continuously come down. And I'm using the county as a centerpiece because we have our section there, which was done prior to the state coming in and adding back in.
I, to be honest with you, I'm unfamiliar with the, the street lighting you're speaking of, and I guess there's a difference between lighting on the street and lighting in the parking lot? And, um?
Exactly.
So you want that to try to match, is that what you're, you're saying?
Yes, if you will, just at least, especially on the Midway corridor. I'm not necessarily talking Salvage right there because you're gonna have lights anyway within the building, but at least the lights along the side.
Um, Commissioner, I, I'm sure that we would be willing to consider, it's just about availability and whether or not it meets the standards for what Wawa expects for lighting along their front.
No, I understand, that's why I'm, I'd like at least to have some consideration with that being a priority if possible. And all it is, is just go down to the section from US one to Twenty-Fifth Street, and you'll see the lighting that I'm talking about. The pretty pretties, yeah.
It's nice lighting, it's well lit.
It is. It bright, it's bright.
Okay.
It's not just a little light out there.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, I think that's, I mean, um, Scott from, from Wawa's here, he can come up and, and speak to that if you would like, but I think that's something that we're willing to consider.
Hey Scott, come on down.
It's safety. It's very safe, that intersection.
I concur, and we'll let Scott speak. And for the record, please identify yourself, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Scott Carney, real estate engineer for Wawa. So how can I help?
Make it pretty pretty. I, I don't know if you heard Commissioner Hutchinson? Okay.
So I think we can work with it if we can keep it at the perimeter more so. And, uh, we do have a, a basic site lighting plan. In fact, uh, we just opened up a store not too far from here at US one in Virginia recently, last week, that, that's the standard lighting that we use, actually just down the road from here as well at Okeechobee and Jenkins.
That's not the pretty pretty lights.
It's not as pretty, probably.
Yeah.
It does have the architectural features probably you're, you're interested in.
It is, it's the architectural features, and it would be nice to see that consistent come as we come through.
It would be contact.
Correct, correct. But see, with all these big trees I'm gonna put there, you're not gonna see them. No, just kidding.
But, but the big trees means you don't have to do all the little shrubs, that's gonna save you money.
I do appreciate that. I do appreciate that.
So in a spirit of cooperation?
I think there's common ground here.
Okay. Is that it, Commissioner Hutchinson?
That's where mine, I was following up with Commissioner Zadowski. Pretty pretties.
Thank you, sir.
So we, we don't, I don't have a, a formal presentation for this, so, um, we'd be happy to answer any other questions, I think. What I'm hearing is larger trees, potentially no shrub material, and, um, lights around the perimeter that match the lights that are done on the Midway Road section from US one to Twenty-Fifth Street.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Would, would the perimeter lighting be on the same spacing as you have the street lighting? I mean, it would have to be a?
I would say whatever we would have to do to meet the photometric plan.
Right.
Meet the photometric requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Again, this is, uh?
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, um, Chairman, if there could just clarification on the size of the trees, that would be very helpful, because I threw some options out there for spacing and sizing, and I spoke with staff beforehand, and we would like fairly clear direction from the board on size of the trees and spacing. Remember, two-and-a-half inch is what the code says, every thirty feet. The DOT plans were eight-inch every thirty feet. We feel like that's too close together, that those trees are gonna hurt themselves as they get older. We think more spacing, the larger tree you get, the more spacing, the smaller tree you get, the closer together you can put them.
Uh, I'm, no, I agree. I, I think our landscaping plans sometimes, they, there's too many plants and then they kill one another. So I'm good with, if we're gonna go with bigger trees, more distance between them because you want the tree to grow and blossom out, so. Plus the line of vision coming in and out of there, and not have the low bushes so that people can see. I'd rather have a taller tree with the canopy up higher so the cars aren't blocked with their view, so. That still doesn't make you.
You get the idea. You want the exact numbers?
I can't give you an exact.
I, I, I think that we need a range, could we say four to si- four to eight, or six to eight?
No, no four, six to eight, nothing lower than six.
Yeah.
Would you say twelve to twenty-four?
No, I didn't say that.
You would love to see that tree sprayed green those days.
Six to eight every forty feet. Not that I'm putting words in your face, or mouth, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to.
That's what we were saying.
You had said the ten trees on each side, it would come out to ten trees on each side.
Ten trees would be thirty feet, or forty feet, it would be a little bit less than that, probably.
No, do the ten, ten trees on each side.
Easy peasy.
You don't think that's gonna be a little crowded when they get big, though?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that conclude? Okay, again, this is a public hearing, would anybody like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, our close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion.
With all the conditions on the floor.
At the conditions that were previously discussed, we have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson and a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Okay, we're moving on to number eight. Again, this, uh, item is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've not spoken with anyone in short of staff.
Only spoken with staff?
Staff.
Staff, too.
Good evening again. For the record, Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Uh, this is, uh, representing item nine C eight for the MMR RV Park for the planned non-residential development rezoning and preliminary site plan. Staff is requesting a proposed permit until the July eleventh, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at six PM or soon thereafter.
Okay, we're having a request to, uh, continue this to January eleventh.
So open and close public comment.
Up, we will open pub, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Please step forward. Seeing none, we will close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest that we take a break?
I was just gonna suggest that, we're gonna be going on to the regular agenda.
But can I ask a question on the regular agenda? In light of staff being here that's left, is there, is it possible to take item B first and then A? Because B is just the one item, we can talk about that, and then the rest of the items, A, if we could just reverse and make?
I was gonna suggest that also, Commissioner, so that's fine. We'll move, uh, B first, and then we'll move on to county attorney. We're gonna take a ten-minute recess, and we'll reconvene in ten minutes. Thank you. Traffic study projection, project phase one, construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Don West, Philip, is, can you hear me?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Could we have staff check Mr. West's microphone?
There we go. Is that better? There we go. We're good. Thank you. Um, Don West and also I have with me John Frank, our assistant road and bridge director is with me also. Um, Commissioners, we're here tonight uh to request board approval um to move forward with the construction of our safety improvement project on on Indian River Drive. As you know, we've been working on this for a number of months now. And this is the phase one project. Um, and it's in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is the total cost right now on the project. And it it includes this phase one segment includes Indian River Drive between Walton Road and Midway Road, which is approximately six point two miles in length. So we identified this as early on as our phase one. Um, so our last town hall meeting with the residents was in October thirteenth. Uh, where we presented all this information uh to the residents and they generally were supportive of the plan. Um, we did in fact receive some good compliments about the stop signs, you know, that we put in a number of months ago. Um, so it's um, you know, they did mention that it's been very effective. So uh we, uh Mr. Frank has a short presentation here to pull up on the screen that we just wanted to go through. And I wanted to just provide a just a list really of what we've included as the actual elements in the project, just so that everyone's on the same page in terms of where we ended up. So there's a list here that shows the uh the features uh that we're using as our traffic calming strategies for the project. Uh, we have these dynamic uh speed feedback signs. They're the radar signs that show the speed of the approaching vehicle. In our town hall meetings, we had a lot of discussion about the um striping. And we've eliminated all the audible type striping uh that makes any kind of noise at all. So we've we've shown that is striked out. Uh, we also had some rumble strips that were eliminated from the project. Those are um where you approach the stop signs, you would typically put those rumble strips in. The transverse pavement markings are the types of markings that they're not raised, they don't make any noise. And you put those where you're going into a curve where the the drivers will, as they're approaching that curve, they'll see that and 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 they'll tend to slow down. And I've got some pictures of these that I'm just gonna bring you through real quickly, just to show you the visuals, so you can see what they look like. And then finally, um, we've got vehicular weight restriction signs for the truck traffic, which will help restrict some of the heavier truck traffic on the drive. And then we've got a lot of work we're gonna do on pavement, so we'll talk about that. But quickly, John, if you could just go through the pictures. Here's the the feedback sign. It shows the speed and also it shows your speed as you're approaching the sign. And it also will collect data, speed data from the vehicles as these signs are being used throughout the duration. Next one is the, these are those transverse pavement markings which are typically at a curve. And it just they get closer together as you approach the curve and it tends to make the driver tend to slow down as they as they approach a curved area. These will only be placed where we have a curve. So there's really not much of this on the drive. The next one, and this is just our typical truck type uh sign that restricts truck traffic. We're also gonna be looking at the um on the ordinance that, you know, that's related to these truck restrictions. We're gonna take a look at that and see if that needs to be amended or updated so that the sheriff's department, in fact, will be able to enforce the um the regulations. And then finally, pavement, and you can see the pavement edge in this photograph. This was the issue we were trying to address. Uh, we have these drop-offs along the edge of the pavement. And this is where we're gonna be doing the work on the pavement. A lot of the work is related to this. And we're gonna go in and cut out some of these areas where we have uh crumbled edges and where the pavement edges are deteriorated. We're gonna cut those areas out into the actual travel lane. We'll be cutting about two feet into the lane and then replacing those areas with new pavement. And then at the end of the day, we're going to, once all the repairs are done, we're gonna overlay all of that with what we call a cape seal, so that all of it will be the same uniform color before we put down the new striping. That coating also tends to um protect the joints so that we don't get water penetration into those areas where we repaired it. So that's typically what the pavement looks like, what the repairs are gonna look like. Our road and bridge staff is uh prepared to move forward to um fast fast track the uh construction of the project using some of our existing containment contracts that we already have in place. So we've already got some real good prices. These uh prices that you see in front of you for each of the various features, it lists each of the different features along with the price. And um these prices are fairly fairly good. They're fairly accurate because we've already got proposals. John Frank has already gone through and gotten proposals for all of the various components, so that we're pretty pretty certain what these prices are gonna be. So when all of this was designed and and we arrived at a consensus on the various elements, we realized, of course, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated in the existing budget. So we're asking the board to increase the project budget. That's really the board action tonight would be to increase the project budget to the necessary total cost of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then also just give us the green light to go forward if the board wishes to go forward with the construction. And we have a tentative schedule, which is the last slide. And it shows us starting the work around the first of February. That's assuming that we get approval tonight. We'd be in a position to move forward and uh actually start the pavement pavement work in early February and then go in and do the signs in about April. So by summer, we would have all this completed by by next summer. There are some issues with the signs with ordering the signs. There's a little bit of an issue there with just obtaining the materials and that kind of thing, so. Uh, Mr. Frank has got a lot of, he's done a lot of work on setting all this up with the scheduling. So if there's any questions on that, he can answer those questions. And with that, um, I didn't entertain any questions from the board. Mr. Chair, can you go back?
Commissioner, sit down.
Thank you. Um, can you go back to the roadside edge? Um, I just wanna make sure that that it's understood that while the roadside edge is part of the process, um, it's if you're looking at the actual grass and and uh soiled area, that's going to be improved significantly as to avoid the issue of the uh leaving the roadway and then having to overcorrect. So that roadway side, the side of the road will actually be improved to a significant amount so as to not to have that drop off with the uh the urge for the driver to overcorrect coming back on the road. Yes, sir. That and that you're absolutely right. That is part of the project. Um, after we cut out the pavement and and addressed the pavement part, the the pavement will end up being the same width that it is right now.
No expansion.
But.
No expansion.
No expansion of the pavement. Um, but outside of the pavement edge, we are gonna do work in that area where you have that rutting that occurs, where sometimes the wheels drift off the edge of pavement. So we are gonna build that up with some um, there'll be some asphalt uh millings material that'll be compacted into those areas. And then we're gonna put sod on top of that, so it'll just look like grass next to the pavement. But actually underneath it, you'll have a good solid base with asphalt millings. So it it and typically that's what you see a lot on the, you know, the shoulder areas where the the DOT uses a lot of that material as well on their on their shoulders. It works pretty well for, it holds up better than just the normal um coquina rock. So we think that'll give us a good solid uh shoulder area there.
Any other questions, Mr. Jowski? Oh, we're gonna move along.
I I just have a couple comments. I think it's important, um, because I know I've received emails, so I'm sure all of you have, that residents think that this is gonna be whitened and then they're gonna be having to go over to right of way and the palm trees and stuff. So I know that some of them are watching and I want this to be on the record for them to understand. The road is not getting whitened. It's gonna be fixed so that, you know, the correction of going off in what you see here, you'll go off, the grass will be level with that, so it'll be a smoother transition to come back. We're not looking to take right of way or trees or move anything between the road and the water or up into the people's yards.
Yes, 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 ma'am. That's absolutely correct.
Okay, the other thing that I have is um, I do think, number one, we need the sheriff's department to step up and they need to be there because that's the way it's really only gonna get fixed. With that said, um, because I I know that they have budgets too and and to put officers out there. Um, I think that um, Don, you and I had this conversation, lowering the speed limit is gonna be another way to fix this. However, I know that the signs are gonna go up. We're gonna give us the data that we need for the study. And I think it's important here for residents to understand that we can't just come in and make a change of speed up or down. We have to have um statistics and we have to have everything in hand because if there's another accident, the speed's been lowered, an attorney can come in and fight and say, well, the speed limit was lowered, so that's why it's creating more accidents. So we have to have the data. The data will come from those signs. And we have to do another study anyways because the last one was done in twenty seventeen. So that's gonna make it less expensive for us because the data will be collected from that sign rather than going out to Kimmely Horn and pay them thousands of dollars to do what they did. So that with that said, though, I do think that where the stop signs are coming east, guardrails need to go up. I think that when people go through the stop sign, it is somewhat of a barrier to stop them. I know with engineering, I know it's a drop-off and I know that it's shallow areas there. But I know that with engineering and the way things are done today, guardrail can be put there. And so is it gonna totally stop a car from going over, or maybe not, depending on how fast they're going? But I think for peace of mind for most people, it's very inexpensive to be able to do that. And if the car has slowed down to come to stop and and they're not going seventy miles an hour, I do think that it would stop them from going over that embankment. So I would like to see the guardrails put up at all the three stop, you know, at the stop signs where they're coming. And um I also, in this same email, said that, you know, they didn't feel that we were really being a lot of proactive on this because people were driving through their front yard. I understand it is the front of your yard, but that road was there. And it's not like we went in and took out part of your yard to put down a street. The street was there. Yes, you own property on both sides. But this is a road that runs north and south throughout Saint Lucie County from, you know, the east coast along Treasure Coast. And so I know they're passionate. I know there's a problem. I think we all recognize that. I want them to understand that we are trying to get there to do things. And I also know that there's been conversations that they feel it's a lot of money for the cape seal. Um, I personally agreed with them in the beginning, but after having conversations with Mr. West, it makes sense. If we're gonna go in and we're gonna take out parts of the road, we're gonna have patches all along the road. And so then they're gonna come back in and they're gonna be upset because the road's gonna look really, really bad in front in front of their houses. And so to clean that up and to also stabilize it and have this smooth surface over that for the structurability of that is something that has to be done. So we might find, you know, after doing this section, getting the data from the signs, that maybe just lowering the speed limit and the guardrails, but there's all we're gonna have to do. We won't have to come back and do any other part of the road. So I would like to have the support of the board to at least agree to put the guardrails up at the stop signs tonight and whatever we decide to do.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Could could I follow up on what you just said, Kathy? Make sure I understood it correctly. When you say we don't have to do the rest of the road, are you meaning the other? Because this is a section of the drive, not all of it.
Correct. So what it's my understanding that if the data comes back, we it's a possibility that in lowering the speed limit and with the guardrails put up and the stop signs in place, that in moving forward, the other sections that we are potentially contemplating maybe doing might not have to be done because the data will show that lowering the speed limit is what it's gonna take to fix the the northern and southern parts of that. I'm not saying that it is because they have to go back and evaluate the road as well. But from my understanding, staff has chose that section because that was the worst part of the road where it was tore up on the sides. That was my understanding.
Not the worst place with the accidents.
Correct. The accidents we know are north.
Right, yeah. Okay, I've I've been having a hard time understanding because I was, I think all of us have attended every single one of the meetings. And and I'm gonna think big picture because it's three sections of road to what eighteen miles total, I think, is what we looked at.
It's about, I think it's around thirteen altogether that the county actually has jurisdiction over.
And the cost doubled from what we originally said. It actually went more than double. So and I'm not looking at cost versus a life by no means. But if the board's gonna move forward with this, remember, it's going to cost just as much for the other two sections, if not more. So I'm trying to get ahead and I'm thinking, trying to think ahead before I move here because once you do this, then we're committed all the way through. Is there any other treatment besides that cap seal that would be just as more cost-effective and still give us the security of that, the joints being sealed? And I'm asking it because that's the highest cost in here, is the six hundred. I don't know if we can go over just re-mill and re-surface them, you know, if that works or not. And I'm and I'm saying this because I can imagine the next two sections, where's that money coming from? Because we had budgeted one amount. Now we're being asked to double it and I've yet to hear where those funds are coming from.
For the usual.
For this one, where those funds are. Wait a minute, wait a minute. And then it's like, where are we gonna go to the others? Because my thing is if I'm gonna commit to something, it's gonna get followed all the way through, which means in a timely manner. So where where's the proposed funds being considered?
We give you the opportunity to speak, Mr. West.
Sure.
In the bigger picture.
Sure, yeah. With respect to the subsequent phases, and we do have at least two additional phases to do. You know, we have, we have to go from Walton Road all the way to the South County line and address that section. And then we have to go from Midway Road all the way up to Savannah Road. So those are the other two areas that we have not addressed, you know, with this phase one project. We did identify phase one because it was the area that had the um the highest prevalence of of speeding occurring, actually. Um, it was more about the speeding than it was about the accidents because the accidents are pretty widespread along the whole length of the quarter. When we looked at that, there's accidents really everywhere, you know, along the the roadway. So it had more to do with the um, you know, this being selected because of the speeding. But the other sections of road are probably gonna have, you know, somewhat similar treatment, I would expect. The pavement part of it will vary a little bit, but it's it's probably not gonna vary that much because there are deteriorated pavement edges along, you know, the full length. It's mostly along the eastern edge of pavement. You know, that's where most of the deterioration has occurred. Um, but I but I can't say that, you know, we are, we are not gonna have that on those other phases. I think we will. But it's gonna probably vary a little bit, you know, up or down in terms of the amount.
But basically, ballpark figure is gonna be.
I mean, I would expect those other phases to be similar in cost.
A million point three.
Exactly. I would say, I would say we're we're looking at some big numbers like that if we if we follow and, you know, if we find that these particular strategies that we've chosen are working, then we're probably gonna suggest to you that we would do something similar on those other phases. So I would expect the prices to be similar, yes.
If not higher because of the timeframe going out. So again, I'm not trying to put this off by no means. Something needs done and I agree to that. And Kathy, I like your idea. That's why I asked you to repeat it. We may not have to do the other, but I don't think that's gonna cut it. If you're gonna do one and this is smack in the middle, correct? You're gonna have to do the other. You're committing all the way through. So my concern is trying to help the situation, but also to let this board be aware it is a commitment of well over three million dollars. So my thing is, have we even looked at that from a budgetary standpoint as to how we're going? Because the infrastructure funds are already used up, you know, they're already committed and you can't change those because we've made that commitment on that. Gas tax is what it is and don't expect much more, probably less. You can't use impact fees on it, so it goes into our general fund. So, Mr. Tipton, I know we've worked on a five-year plan. We're in what year? Two of the five-year, the most recent. Are you taking this into consideration as we go into budgets and stuff? And again, the residents need to know that these aren't gonna be back to back because it's gonna depend on the funding.
That's correct. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, yes, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year dedicated out of the general fund for improvements on uh I drive here. And uh the the challenge will be, if you're talking about, say, two and a half million dollars, either we're going to have to uh do some debt in order to get that done or if we're doing a pay-as-you-go, it's gonna take you.
or if we're doing a pay-as-you-go, it's going to take you, you know, nine or 10 years to get there. So, that's, it's a long-term solution. But to Commissioner Townsend's point, and has been presented, it's a pilot. And so, we want to kind of see what works and what doesn't and take that feedback. But potentially, it is a long-term game plan.
And I think this one, I want to make clear, is one of those, I mean, because we heard complaints, or at least I had heard some of them, you know, that, you know, this isn't where it's needed the most because of where the pilot project it needs down here, you know, whether it's the city limits of Fort Pierce or not. And I don't think, when we spoke to them at our joint meeting, I didn't hear a lot of what they're getting ready to do. Do you know, Don? Have you followed up with them at all?
Well, I did have conversation with the city engineer. And, you know, he indicated to me he's getting some prices, you know, on, just on the striping at this point. So, the double yellow striping that we already did. That was our first step that we did. They're looking at something similar at this point, you know. But that's all that he really was pursuing at the time, was just the striping cost.
Okay. Is there any other material or technique or something that you can use that can get us the same thing?
Yeah, we were just, you know, Mr. Frank and I were just talking about that a little bit. There's, you know, there's some other similar type, you know, treatments, but they're all pretty close in price. I mean, you know, a slurry seal is another technique that's used to seal the, to make it all look the same. But it's a little more slippery. It's not as, you know, what we like about this particular type. This cape seal is better for traction. It provides, you know, better traction for the tires and that kind of thing in wet weather. And so, that's why we're recommending this. But it's, you know, these other seal coats are really not a whole lot cheaper. And you're still going to be doing the pavement repair where you have to cut out the pavement areas and replace it. So, you're probably looking at similar costs, you know.
And I'm not saying I'm against doing this. I'm just, I just want everybody to be aware, including the residents, that this is not, can't be done in the short timeframe. That's only one. Then it's finding the funding and where that's coming from.
Mr. Tipton, I have a question before, and I'll let Mr. Commissioner Zadowski. I know he wanted to speak. With the bipartisan infrastructure bill, would any of that monies become available down the road for a project like this?
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. The rules aren't out yet, but it's possible.
Potential.
It's potential, yes.
Commissioner Zadowski.
I like a lot of what I'm hearing. And you talked about a phasing process. We talked about our five-year plan just to correct our budget issues from the years of recession, the future ideas of guardrail. I would suggest that, and talk about taking time. It's taken 13 years to get to this spot. And so, what I don't want to do is lose the momentum that we've had to get the pilot in place, do the data collection and understand exactly what are we seeing with the investment that we've made. The future investment may be different based on that information. Moving to a lower speed limit sign to 25 or 30 may be the opportunity in the least expensive way of doing that. I would recommend, you know, going forward with the things that have been agreed to so far outside of doing the guardrails, but bringing that same question to the table when we do budgets. And then, look at a period of time in which we designate a certain amount of money going forward. But we'll know more in six to 10 months with data collection and probably initiate 250,000 or whatever the number will be after budgets going forward. But if it's taken 13 years to get here to do seven things, let's get those seven things in. Let's get the data collection, talk about it in budgets, and then plan where those investments will come from and look at where the monies may come going forward. But I think it's imperative that we move forward tonight with what we have in hand. But I would really like to bring that back, the guardrail idea with the strategic plan or our budgeting process. And then, also from a standpoint of a, looking out two, three, four, five years.
Right. How are we going to get there? And Commissioner, again, I'm just going to reemphasize, I am not against this by no means. It's just one of those, when you start looking at the bigger picture, which is what we need to do, it's always, is, all right, what are we going to do? Because if I'm going to make a commitment, I'm making it all the way through. It's, you know, and I think that's what the residents would expect.
Well, I suspect that the residents will be largely at the budget meetings to discuss where we place certain items. And this is clearly a high priority. And the good news is, is we see that the sheriff has been out there quite more frequently.
He has.
So, we're starting to see the fruits of that labor. But, you know, getting this done, getting the data, being able to focus the sheriff's actions in the areas with the highest speeds and so on. And even in one email that I read, the double yellow lines and the passing was caught in action, which was pretty spectacular. I'm glad that that happened.
Yeah, me too.
So...
I only have, is that it, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I only have one question. What Commissioner Townsend asked about the guardrails, do you have a ballpark figure what that would cost to implement those in that 6.2-mile area? Do you have any...
It's only three guardrails at the three stop signs.
Oh, that's why I'm asking.
They can take it out of road and bridge budget. They can pull it from road and bridge and put the three guardrails up.
I'm just asking what the cost is, and we can get to that. Ballpark. I'm not going to hold you to it, but within...
I don't know an exact cost, but I think it's something we could look at trying to just implement. I mean, we're going to be doing a guardrail project on Midway Road.
Right.
It's coming forward. And so, we're getting, you know, costs to do that. We have a contractor that's under our continuing contracts that can do the guardrail installation. So, it's something that we could probably look at, you know, trying to add on during this calendar year coming up in '22. You know, maybe when this project gets completed, we come in under road and bridge and put those guardrail sections up. If we can find that funding, we can bring that back before the board.
Yeah, no, that we talked about that.
You know, it's just an add-on item or a separate item. But I think that's something we can look for and see if we can get the funding set up for it. We can get some quotes on it, certainly.
Okay. And bring it back to us.
And bring it back, sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that, I do, because I think it's a good idea also. And I also believe that the data that we receive will help us look forward. What works, what's not working. And just like Commissioner Hutchinson, well, everyone said that this has taken 13 years to get there, and now is the time to do it, so...
It's a regular hearing item?
It's...
It's a regular item.
It's a regular agenda.
I'd like to make the motion to approve staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Townsend. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to go to an amended item, and that's a 10A1, which is the airport MRO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, as you indicated, is 10A1. It relates to a proposed request for qualifications for the airport MRO hangar. The board will recall, we last addressed this item on November 2nd. At that time, the board took several actions, among which was a direction to county staff to develop a multi-step procurement approach and package, commencing with a request for qualifications and an evaluation process to narrow the field. And they directed staff, you directed staff at that time to present that plan to the board. We are at that stage. We've been working, as the board is aware, with Mr. Robert Alfred, an attorney who has assisted the county in the past on the port procurement and, among others, and also on the stadium. That's one of his areas of expertise. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to him to explain the RFQ. Also, we've got some strategies on how to advertise it and get it out. I don't know if either Mr. Alfred or Mr. Payne will be addressing those, but somebody will address those items as well.
I will address those. And good evening, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations, of course, members of the board. So, again, Robert Alfred, I'm here with Stan Payne. And on behalf of staff, what we're asking for is an approval of the draft RFQ and the process that we've laid out in your agenda packet and the approval to go ahead and accelerate our advertisement so we can get this out on the street and get you all an approved vendor for this very important asset for the county. So, what we did when we came here a month ago is we outlined a plan that we thought would maximize participation on this procurement and get you a valid, legitimate vendor that's really going to be good for the economic growth of this community. And what we've done through the evaluation over the past month, and it's reflected in the RFP, is we've addressed three key points. First off, we broadened the scope of this procurement. If you recall, the original procurement was really focused predominantly on the MRO. And through that process, we realized there's probably greater opportunity out here. First off, we didn't get a lot of responsive proposals, but we also had people in the community that were raising through the RFP process through an A session that they would like us to expand this, potentially even for FBO operations. So, that's what we've done. We've expanded the procurement. It goes beyond traditional MRO uses, but they're still aviation-related. We've got all of the ancillary and contiguous parcels next to that MRO hangar that are also available for development opportunity. And we've opened up a platform for FBOs to come in and express their interest as well. So, that was step number one, was broadening the procurement so we could generate more interest in our procurement here. The second thing we did was we established a two-step procurement process, which, as Mr. McIntyre has indicated, we have used for prior procurements. And it's a pretty traditional procurement methodology that local governments and state governments use on more complicated procurements. And those kind of procurements where you want to have more industry engagement, industry interaction. So, that's what we've done by the development of this RFQ, followed by the RFP. But what's important about this process is we opened up the door for a lot more industry engagement. You'll notice through the ad and in the submission requirements, we're actually having two pre-submitting conferences. I like to call those industry workshops because it creates an opportunity for industry to come in. They're going to learn about our opportunities. They're going to be allowed to ask a lot of questions and get a lot of answers so we can generate more interest. So, in that initial step, we're going to get more participation. I'm confident that this process is going to achieve maximum productivity on your procurement. So, that's what we did with the two-step process. Then, the third element, which we also lay out in your packet, it's Section C, we're getting a lot more creative on how we're actually advertising this opportunity. You know, obviously, by law and by your policy, you're required to advertise in a local newspaper of general circulation. And of course, that also goes on your electronic medium, which is DemandStar. We want to reach out to the industry itself, not just this local market. So, we're going to be advertising in a myriad of sources that are industry-specific, and that's both print and electronic. We're looking at sources like Aviation Week, Airport Business, and Aviation International News. We're also going to be doing targeted direct mailers. So, everybody that expressed an interest in our prior procurements are going to get noticed, direct notice of this procurement as well. So, we do think that this three-pronged approach to the advertisement is just going to get the word out there. So, those three things that we've done to repackage this procurement, I'm confident is going to net you greater interest in our opportunities here. So, I'll open the floor to questions. And of course, Mr. Payne is here as well.
Smile, Stan.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Is the meeting going to be mandatory to bid?
It is not. My concern with making it mandatory is occasionally you'll see that somebody that actually proposed did not have an opportunity to attend, and it precludes them.
And I agree with that. I just needed to clarify that.
But we're also, if I can, we're doing two things. It's non-mandatory, and you can attend virtually as well.
That was my next question. Is it going to be available virtually?
Absolutely. And we're going to do two of those in the exact same way, spaced two weeks apart.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments, actually. Mr. Chair, thank you. You know, the important part of this is DemandStar has its place, but it's not the place for this particular situation. You know, there's so much about St. Lucie County and so much about Treasure Coast International. It doesn't show up in an RFQ.
That's correct.
EDC has to be at the table for this. We have secured now millions of square feet of intermodal distribution centers, the likes of FedExes and Amazons and CBI and Tamco and for manufacturing and so on. So, all of those elements are very important for the airport to be successful with bringing in elements that may go to those particular intermodal distribution entities. So, when I go and I speak to the FAA or I go to the P3 conferences or the airport conferences, I talk to general people who are there and just explain to them of what Treasure Coast International has. But more importantly, the assets that St. Lucie County has, that being the roadway systems, the reasons for people to actually move there and to invest there, our waterways, our ocean access, the fact that we have a mega yacht industry that's burgeoning and ready to come out of its shell. So, all of those things have to be part of the conversation. When you have ground operations of FedEx that's 600,000 square feet and soon to expand, that air cargo side of that is going to help feed those, the Amazons. We missed out on Lakeland simply because we didn't have the runway.
Right.
So, when I drive by there now, I've been over there now five times in the last six months, and it's just amazing what we missed out on. But it was because we didn't have the runway strength. We didn't have the extension of the runway that was important. But all of these assets are going to be so important to not only the future of the airport, but the future of this FBO, I mean, the hangar. So, bottom line, we have new blood coming into the airport.
You do.
That's a positive aspect of this thing. So, I'm excited to get this thing moving. But I would like to be very close to the conversation whenever it comes to actually having these workshops because being able to tell the story about St. Lucie County is going to be key.
Yeah, agree.
That being said, there's more to do at the airport. You know, Stan, pressure's on you. Eric, pressure's on you. I think this board has been patient. We went through a recession. We're ready to go. And I think there's a lot of support up here. And it is the next economic driver that's going to help reduce taxation in this county from residential households by being able to bring the commercial side and bring those jobs here that's going to make and balance our economy.
Yep. Completely agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, would you have a...
No questions.
Let's get it done.
Thank you very much.
A motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Zadowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Going on to number two. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item relates to the opioid litigation that the board filed suit against various companies in that. We did receive an email in November of this year suggesting that we enter into two participation agreements along with all the other local governments involved in the litigation. If 95% agree, that will increase our potential funding by 20% from 50% to 70%. So, we're recommending, and in the opioid litigation team is recommending, that the board approve these two participation agreements. It's contingent upon 95% of the governments participating. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was in unison. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three will be presented by Criminal Justice Director Joseph Cowan. Relates to a proposed interlocal agreement with Indian River County for pre-trial services provided by St. Lucie County Pretrial, a certified pretrial.
Good evening, Mr. Cowan.
Provider.
Good evening. Excuse me. For the record, Joseph Cowan, Criminal Justice Director. St. Lucie County has provided pre-trial services to Martin and Okeechobee Counties for several years now. And recently, Indian River has approached us and asked us to do the same for them. We've come to an agreement. Initially, Indian River will pay following signatures, thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars for startup cost, and then, an additional seventeen thousand nine hundred, excuse me, per month for the services. And our services will start on or before April first. That's our current target date, but we anticipate being able to do it sooner than that. And then, that contract will carry through September twenty-twenty-two and hopefully be renewed. Their interlocal agreement will have no negative financial impact as fees will collect it from Indian River will offset the cost of the program, and staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items four and five will be presented by Assistant County Attorney Caroline Valentin. I will note, item four, Mr. Oppernborn is in the audience if the board has any questions about that item as well.
Good evening. Morin Tilling donated a four-hundred-and-twenty-foot vessel to the county to be used as an artificial reef. The donor cleaned the vessel and prepared it for deployment. To facilitate a quick deployment, the county attorney's office drafted an agreement, which was signed by the county administrator, setting forth the terms and conditions of the donation. The vessel was successfully deployed on December first, and staff recommends that this board accept the donation and ratify the donation agreement.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Zadowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. And Jim, you do yeoman's work. Moving right along to item number five.
Thank you. At the last meeting on November sixteenth, this board adopted Resolution Number twenty-one dash three ninety-two, which provided board consent for the merger of APP Properties with Ridgewood Infrastructure, conditioned on certain deficiencies being met as part of the resolution. After this adoption of the resolution, the merging parties did contact the county and requested that the conditions on the consent be removed so that the merger could occur prior to the deficiencies being corrected. Resolution Number twenty-one dash four two eight repeals Resolution Number twenty-one dash three ninety-two and provides consent for the merger. Staff recommends that the board adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash four two eight, consenting to the merger, and authorize the chair to sign lesser's consent to merger as approved by the county attorney.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Zadowski. Oh, we have a question.
Yeah, just wanna make sure the deficiencies are all going to be met in a period of time.
So, the resolution does attach a consent agreement that does have an action plan which set forth deadlines for the deficiencies to be corrected. Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna move on to announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I just wanted to share that for the month of December, we are kind of an abbreviated month due to the holidays. And so, we will have our informal meeting on December fourteenth at one PM here in these chambers. And our regular meeting, which would normally be on the third Tuesday, will actually also be on December the fourteenth, and that will be at nine o'clock in the morning here in these chambers.
Thank you. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Motion adjourned.